This one's.
I want a mic. I know my butt.
Right this.
I'm on air right now.
That's mine.
What's up with this?
That's mine.
Oh, yes.
I think this is.
Brian, is this my light just go on? Just want to make sure I got the right one.
I'll bring it in for you.
I meant to ask Al to fix that. Did you have it on?
On the air.
I was here Monday night for this.
Okay, um, I think we're on the air, right?
I believe we're on the air.
I'm calling the town council workshop, June 20th, the session. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 2007-05, which is an amendment to the zoning ordinance in dealers and junk salvage and recycled materials. This ordinance has been read at the May 16th meeting, and tonight's the public hearing. So we'll let people speak. If you'd like, if you have any comments on this ordinance, please raise your hand and come up to the podium. I'm gonna have Dan Vincent speak first. He made me aware of some additional changes that he's gonna request, so I figured it might be good for him to start with that. And then whoever from the public is interested.
Good evening. In reference to the ordinance being proposed, most recently Cheryl McGary and I, who is a representative of the state DES, has been investigating some of the sites in town that would be considered junk yards. And since that time, I've received additional information that is not inclusive in our ordinance, which has inclusive definitions as well as additional language for appeals and processes that has been submitted by the state for local governments to use. So I would propose that the ordinance be held until further information can be supported and provided to you for your review.
Okay. Sorry, the names and the light switches aren't correlated yet, so. Minister Dixon and then Counsel Jarvis, did you have a question or?
Well, just a point, I'd like to suggest that you conduct your public hearing tonight and continue it until meeting the next workshop meeting in July, where Dan can bring in the amendments and we can continue the public hearing. The other thing I would request too is for Dan to highlight, as he talked with me here for the purposes of discussion tonight and the public that's here, just exactly what are the main ramifications of this new junkyard ordinance, so that people will understand? Are there more properties, fewer properties that are gonna be impacted by this? Right now, currently, we have one junkyard license and permitted in Newmarket. Will this be expanded in any way, means, or form as a result of this ordinance?
I don't think.
Without the definitions or anything else that you're gonna be bringing in?
It should not. The number of junkyards under the state RSA would probably remain the same. It's probably 10 or less under the definitions of junkyard, and that the definitions will certainly help in defining the process for permitting, as well as definitions for typical uses of junkyards.
Okay, you say that it won't change, but we have one permitted junkyard, and you just mentioned 10 or less.
Yes. And I have not walked a property. It's all private property. I've observed the property from a distance, and from what I see there, that there are probably seven to 10 locations that could be considered junkyards under the state RSA.
That aren't at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel Jarvis?
Since this is the second time that it's come back to us, I was wondering if I could ask a few questions of Mr. Vincent in regards to this ordinance, so if changes need to be made, those can be incorporated before it comes back to us again?
Can we do that after we conduct the public hearing?
Sure.
During the discussion phase? Thank you. All right, Dan, just please stick around, 'cause I'm sure there'll be questions.
Okay, thank you.
There might be questions from the public as well. So if anyone from the public would like to speak on this ordinance? Okay. All right, Dan, jump back up here. Close the public hearing at 7:07. I'll let Counselor Jarvis go, and then Counselor Glennon.
On the first page of the ordinance, it says, "The application for license and certificate of approval." It refers to the licensing board, and it refers to the licensing board several times within the ordinance. In a brief discussion previously, it was mentioned that that might be the zoning board of adjustments, but I'm wondering if that should be the town council, or the planning board, or what you're trying to reference here?
This is the newer information that I've received, and the, let's see if we have a definition here. When we talk about the local governing body, and the definitions of this RSA means the mayor, the board of aldermen, or the council of the city, the selectmen of a town, or the commissioners of a village or district.
So then, to make it more clear, I'd suggest that we write, instead of "to the licensing board," actually clarify that it would be the town council. And then in that same sentence, it says, "The office of," and these are just my suggestions, it also says, "The office of building safety," which I'm assuming you mean is the planning and zoning department?
Yes.
Okay.
Are those gonna be changes?
And then?
Pardon me? Are those going to be changes?
I'm suggesting them as changes, and then maybe it's a vote that needs to happen as an amendment.
Was, excuse me, was that your questioning?
I was thinking if that is the case, that we should write it as planning and zoning department?
Okay.
Is my suggestion. On the, it's been retyped a couple of times, but I think it's under general operating requirements, which would be page four, number three.
Yes.
No space not covered by the license shall be used in the licensed business.
Yes.
The space shall be indicated by granite monuments. What exactly does that mean?
The RSA is very specific that once the area to be used as a junkyard is specified, that the land be, easiest to say if it was a square piece of land, there would be a granite monument at each corner, and the law does not permit you to extend beyond that perimeter.
So is this straight from the RSA, the space will be indicated by granite monuments?
Specifically.
Just, if you're looking for the one in your packet, the one in your packet wasn't typed up properly, it only had two pages, so you need to go to the one that was in your box.
That's correct. Thank you.
And the ones that are up there. I'm on page four, which is general operating requirements. If you, you don't have to spend your time looking at it now, but if we could just find out if that's specific in the RSA, because right now, if somebody has theirs fenced in or something, and then we're gonna require granite monuments.
Yeah, they're $150 each to install.
Right, so.
By a survey.
And then I called, actually, I emailed Mrs. Ben Van Ude, the town clerk, because she was the one that originally asked us to look at this, and she offered a few questions as well. The license requirements, references made to compliance with fencing requirements or other reasonable regulations from the ordinance, she could not determine what the fencing requirements are, and suggested maybe perhaps RSA 236123 fencing should be incorporated, or at least referenced, and maybe that would clear up some of that.
Right, and that is in the, that is in the newer information that we have.
It is in the new one?
Yes.
Number 12.
And it is 236123 fencing.
236123.
You said it's number 12, Mrs. Quacks?
Number 12 on page five describes the requirement of a minimum eight-foot-high measure from the ground level, solid vertical wall or fence.
Okay.
Is that the state's?
Does that say eight or six?
Says eight in this document.
The RSA calls out six.
So maybe we could check that against the RSA, too?
Yes.
And then, this was just a suggestion that the aesthetic considerations, the first paragraph is verbatim of RSA, the second paragraph talks about building and structure uses and non-conforming use, and maybe that should be a separate section?
Under aesthetic considerations.
Right.
This, the second and, the third sentence of the second paragraph starts with building, all buildings? Is that the part? 'Cause the previous part, it's still.
The second one talks about the building and structure uses and non-conforming use. So maybe if, since it's non-conforming use, it shouldn't be under aesthetic conditions?
You've lost me.
She's on the second paragraph of aesthetic considerations. The first.
No more than one disabled.
Yeah, but the two first, first two sentences are about aesthetics. This third sentence is about buildings. The fourth sentence is about non-conforming use.
Right, so maybe just a separation there for non-conforming use.
Maybe a new paragraph? Yeah, title.
The suggestion is a new paragraph beginning with "all buildings"?
Right, and maybe it is a new section that says "non-conforming use." A new title, header on that one.
To start the new paragraph?
With a new header.
With a new header, right.
Yes.
And then in the ordinance, it says that the license fee shall be 250 payable on July 1st.
Yes.
But I'm not sure if that's keeping with RSA 236122, 'cause the license year is April 1st to March 31st? And since people's license expires March 31st, it would seem reasonable that the license fee should be payable no later than the beginning of the license year? Does that make sense?
And the language in the RSA, they have no specific date?
So we just picked July 1st?
Yes.
So maybe we should pick.
I think anticipating that we would've been through the process by that time.
Oh, I see.
Also, it's the beginning of the fiscal year.
Yeah, fiscal year.
Okay, but if the license, if people's licenses expire on March 31st?
Where is, 'cause Dan just said he didn't see a date in the RSA.
Oh, you don't see a date in the RSA that says it expires on March 31st?
Correct.
Okay.
Would you like to see that?
No, I believe you. So that you're looking at RSA 236122?
Yes.
Okay.
Under license fees.
All right.
We can, we'll make sure that's correct. Yeah, it sounds right. It makes sense to me to have it on a fiscal year basis. That way, the budgeting's easier for the budgeting process.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Counsel Glennon, then Counsel Quox?
Mr. Chairman, so the date would remain the 1st of July?
Unless it conflicts with the state law, which, from what you're saying, it doesn't, so. I haven't heard any suggestions otherwise. Counsel Glennon?
Yeah, I have just two questions. Mr. Vincent, the purpose of this junkyard ordinance is because it's being mandated by state?
Yes.
Okay, because, and the reason why I asked you that question in a public forum, I know the answer, but I'm getting beaten up by constituents calling, saying, you know, this Dan Vincent's running after me, he's making me do this and do that. I try to make it very clear that it's not you, it is the state. You're just implementing the regulations of the RSA.
Correct.
Okay. The other question I have is, where did this $250 come from? Is this something you're proposing to the council to adopt, or is it somewhere in the RSA per state level?
That was, that fee was proposed by the Department of Environmental Services at the workshop on auto salvage ads.
Was it not a dollar figure lower, but not to exceed a maximum of $250?
My recollection was it was $250.
So there's no other amount tossed out there? And the reason why I asked that question is, when this goes into effect, there are gonna be some costs associated with some compliance of this ordinance, and those junkyard people are gonna have to, you know, bring their properties in line to this regulation, so there's a cost factor there. In addition to that, you're gonna get another cost of $250 for the license, and I'm just wondering if we're hitting them too hard too quickly?
I think you're gonna, you'll find there's a great deal of time involved in bringing the ordinance into compliance with those people that are considered to be junk ads. It's an inspection, it's a re-inspection, it's a matter of education, providing information to them, reviewing that information. It's, I don't think you're gonna see that most of the junkyards are in compliance for a year. So I think it's a matter of reappearing and discussions and education with the owners.
So there's gonna be, like, this goes into effect July 1, the first payment, well, the payment of $250 will be due on July 1?
Yes.
But if I understand you correctly, you're saying that compliance to this RSA, they'll have up to a year to do that, to come into compliance?
I'm not, maybe not legally, but I think as the tasks are presented to them, the additional equipment they might have to buy, the additional concerns they might have to give to the land, it deals with catching all fluids that may be draining out of vehicles, erection of fences, monuments.
The fluids are actually in compliance now with EPA, they have to comply with that already.
Well, I can tell you, the sites that we have visited have not been.
Okay, so you have, still have a problem there?
Yes.
Okay.
And so it's a matter of educating those people what the best management practices are.
Okay, and my final question is, the junkyards that you've been able to identify and have been working with, do they all have a packet of what this is all about, what the RSA is, and the different things that they'll have to, like, such as the monument and all the other things that they will have to come into?
Five of them do, yes.
Five of them do, okay.
Yes.
So if they have this information, and any other new junkyard, I'm assuming that you're going to identify, will also receive that, it's the same information, and be given some time to comply with that, as well as everybody else?
Certainly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The information that's being provided is a auto salvage ads training video. There's also a handbook, management and best practices, a environmental guide for the manual to, for those practices associated with the practices that should be followed. So the state has provided a great deal of information.
Okay.
As far as someone to get this this week and expect for compliance next week, I think it's impossible to happen.
Okay.
Again, it's a matter of education and the willingness for those people to wanna comply and practice those methods that protect the environment.
And LGC, I guess, is also offering a course?
Yes.
Okay, is that open to junkyard dealers also, or just public officials?
They've probably been notified. It's open to anybody, and I think the class is actually tomorrow.
Okay, and the class is full, and there's a new one coming in September, I believe?
Yes.
Another class, and just for a point of classification, there will be two, possibly three zoning board members attending that class also. Encourage them to attend it, so.
Counsel Quox?
On, under general operating requirements, number 12, you have the information about the fence that you changed from eight to six, but everything should be enclosed. But then, under aesthetic considerations, you have that no more than one disabled or unregistered motor vehicle shall be visible from any side of the property, properly stored away public view within 12 months. Isn't that, I'd rather see everything behind a fence. You don't wanna believe in, if you have aesthetic concerns and you're asking them to put a fence up, why should we allow them to leave cars without a fence for 12 months?
What page is she on?
Let's start it right there.
One of, I tend to agree with you. Are you saying that the eight-foot fence would be that protection?
No, no, no. Six is fine. I mean, six is fine, but it's saying that everything should be behind a fence, but under aesthetic considerations, it states that you can leave unregistered vehicles stored away from public view within 12 months. So you can leave an unregistered vehicle on your property for 12 months, when the other requirement states everything has to be behind a fence.
I think part of the consideration given to that sentence is that possibly it's a motor vehicle that's there for repair, if it's a repair shop, that might also be considered to be a junkyard.
It says one disabled or unregistered motor vehicle.
I think, my understanding is that if I have two unregistered cars or disabled cars on my property, I'm a junkyard by state law.
Uh huh.
So this is saying that if you happen to be in that circumstance, it may probably needs to, I think it needs to be clarified, because it's exclusive of junkyards and auto repair facilities. So this section is really applying to any property in the town that has more than one registered, unregistered vehicle on it.
Correct.
And occasionally, some of my neighbors do. You know, they collect two or three cars, 'cause they're, you know, fixing them up themselves. So I think that's what it's trying to address. It probably needs to be clarified. It's not addressing a junkyard.
Okay.
And just to clarify that as well, Mr. Chairman, the, one vehicle is one vehicle. If you have one vehicle and a door, now you're onto two vehicles. Or if you have one door and a fender, or one door and a bumper, or one door and a, one car and a windshield, the state is looking at as being the second vehicle.
That's an interesting interpretation.
Yeah.
All right.
I think all this was actually started when Shaheen was governor, and there was more, the beginning of the concern for our visual landscape in the state of New Hampshire and how it was disappearing, and I think a lot of that stemmed to the writing of the language in this state RSA.
All right, well, we've got a lot of lights here, and we have a long agenda, so I would say that we're probably not gonna solve all the questions we have on this, but if we can get them out, and then get Dan working with other staff to start identifying them and trying to answer them, that might be the best way to go tonight. Minister Dixon, then Counsel Branch?
Yes, I think the 250 is not a mandate by the state. It's something that the town council can adjust to, 'cause we're currently paying 25. I think the 250 kinda stuck, 'cause when the town clerk made her presentation, the 250 charge was mentioned in the legislation, and I think everyone kinda took for granted it was kind of a consent for the council to go to 250. But I may be wrong on that, and I would ask Dan to double-check that, but I think, I think it can, you know, go anywhere between zero and, or where we are now, in 250.
That's what I read, too.
Thank you.
Well, what would be the criteria to justify the permit fee? Is it the time spent in bringing in and complying those?
It would be a judgment of the town council on what they want to.
'Cause I can assure you, it's gonna be time-consuming.
Yes, I am sure. A lot of, a lot of our permit structures are.
Yeah, all right.
Not this one, if you don't mind. Counsel, Counsel Branch, go ahead.
Dan, just a quick question. Are any of the facilities grandfathered in any way, shape, or form from meeting any of these requirements?
They're all grandfathered in their location only.
Can you just explain that a little deeper for me?
If we add a non-complying situation, which now defined a location as being a junkyard, if our ordinance said you couldn't have a junkyard in R1, if the junkyard is in R1, then it's grandfathered and it shall remain.
Okay.
But, yes.
Let me just throw this out. We have an existing junkyard, and Newmarket's been here since I can remember.
Yes.
Are they grandfathered from any of these issues?
In location only.
So no.
Only their location is grandfathered. All the other requirements they have to meet, including the fencing?
All the new requirements, yeah.
That's what it sounds like. We're also gonna have to send this for legal review, to make, you know, which is standard practice. I also think that it needs to be structured, most of our ordinances are more structured in terms of numbering system, so you can reference Section 8.3.2.5.70, whatever, and that hasn't been done yet, so. Counsel Glennon?
The only thing I wanted to add, the reason why I asked the question of $250, I agree with Mr. Dixon, I've read something also that didn't state that it had to be $250. My thought is, where they have to come in compliance, and maybe a cost factor there, I would suggest, when we're doing this whole process, to look at a cost perhaps like $100, $150 the first year, and then raise it after that. So give them a chance to, you know, come into compliance with the monies they're gonna have to spend to come into compliance, and then after that, bring that figure back up, and that's my suggestion.
All right, so there's a lot of things that need to be addressed in this, and I am happy that some council spent a lot of time looking into it and understanding it, and I'm wondering if those folks would like to work outside of the meeting with Dan and staff to clean this up, get it to the point where we can bring it back, and then send it on to legal review. So who would be willing to volunteer to do that?
Help.
Roseanne, Dana?
Yeah, I'd be glad to work.
Jen, would you? As well?
Sure.
You'd do it if you're done.
Well, you asked some very good questions, too.
My light was on. Can I ask one question?
You wanna ask another question?
If I volunteer to be on?
Your light was on.
It was, I think you gave it to Dana, but that's okay, I'll forgive you.
I took the opportunity.
Okay, well, go ahead, Jen, yes.
Mr. Vincent, it sounds like you've identified a few places that you're gonna, that could be possible junkyards, and the people that own those properties could not be aware that you're considering them to be junkyards. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, so if you said there's, there's maybe less than 10, but only one currently has a junkyard license, I'd like the council to suggest that, that we, that Dan contacts these people and gives them a copy of this ordinance, and lets them know that it might, that their property might be considered a junkyard under this new ordinance, so that people have an opportunity to get involved and, and read through the ordinance?
Certainly.
I'd like to suggest that, and then I won't ask any more questions.
I've, I've given five of the locations the same publication from the state.
But if there's more than five?
And I've spoke with two of the remaining five, and one is in the process of removing all of the materials that would classify him as a junkyard.
Okay.
Would, is the council in support of Counsel Jarvis's suggestion?
Yes.
Yes.
So, well, I'm not gonna make a formal motion, but you understand that the council suggests he do that?
Yes.
All right, so July's gonna be too busy for this to come back, and it's also summer, so I imagine you all have some busy schedules, so I would say let's shoot for this to come back for the August workshop. And, Mr. Dixon, can you help me understand the ramifications of tabling this ordinance versus continuing the public hearing? If we're gonna make substantial revisions, I might wanna have it reposted anyway.
Okay.
Especially since.
That's a council honor.
Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion to, I mean, we don't have to table, we can just not act on it tonight and bring it back in August, and then probably have another public hearing in September? Assuming we get legal review back?
No, just table it.
I think we need it. All right, so we'll be having that come back at the August workshop. Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
My pleasure, thank you.
The next item is public hearing on ordinance 2007-06, amendment to downtown business district, TIF 1. This is an amendment of the ordinance 1998-03. And this ordinance will add six properties to the boundaries of the downtown TIF district, making them eligible for expenditures from the TIF district funding. These are parcels U3, map U3, lot 207, lot 208, and lot 209, as well as lots 22, 23, and 24, which are at one Short Street, one Prescott Street, three Prescott Street, Crichton Street, lot owned by the American Legion, the corner of Prescott and Crichton Street, which is owned by the American Legion, and four Prescott Street. So at this point, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand, and then have you come to the podium. I'd like to comment on ordinance 2007-06. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:31 PM. I'd request the council, at this point, we are able to take final action on this, and seeing that we're gonna have a busy schedule, all the meetings forever appears, I'd be happy to entertain it moving forward tonight if someone would like to. Counsel Jarvis?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2007-
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 2007-06, Amendment to Downtown Business District Tax Increment Finance District, TIF 1 of Ordinance Number 98-03.
I'll second the motion.
Counselor Jarvis makes a motion, Counselor Plasky seconds it. Is there any discussion? Counselor Glennon?
When does this go into effect?
Immediately.
Upon passage? Okay, I didn't see it unless I missed it. Yes, right there, sorry.
Is there any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Plasky?
Aye.
Counselor Quox?
Aye.
Counselor Branch?
Aye.
Counselor Jarvis?
Aye.
Counselor Glennon?
Aye.
Counselor Hart?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is the Town Clerk Tax Collector Monthly Update, which I think is going to focus on the residents' tax. Oh, okay. Come on up, Becky. Also, before you start, I just wanted to let everyone know that Counselor Wolford Hamel is not present today. He is, has a bad cold, so let's hope he feels better.
Okay. I just wanted to let everyone know, in case you haven't received them in the mail or they're not on your, the top of your agenda right now, that the past 30 days were spent issuing and receiving the first half 2,000 property tax bills to our 3,200 property owners. And the due date is July 2nd. And we also collected all but one of the remaining five properties that had outstanding 2,004 property taxes. I think I brought that to your attention last time I was before you. After consulting with the town administrator, a tax collector's deed was issued to the town this week for the one remaining property. We are winding down the 2007 dog licensing process. And of the approximate 1,100 dogs in Newmarket, we have about 100 that are still not licensed. And unfortunately, we'll be receiving civil forfeitures within the next week. As you pointed out, the primary focus of my report this month is a detailed overview of resident tax. And I bring this before you because the numbers of significant issues over the recent years has grown to a proportion that prohibits our ability to assess and collect this tax. And you each have the complete report in your packet and hopefully you've had an opportunity to, to review the data. But in summary, I would like to just point out that the excessive costs associated with the billing and collection, and conservatively speaking, it costs the town approximately $5 for every $10 that are collected. And the town's inability to properly inventory its residents each year and comply with state statutes is becoming very, making the process very cumbersome and difficult. Along with most other towns, Newmarket repealed use of census requirements nearly 20 years ago. And the current method of assessing issuing warrants and collection is not in statutory compliance. The net revenue realized by the town through resident tax would be significantly greater if it was collected through property tax. To collect the average $48,000 per year costs more than $24,000 per year in postage, supplies, and, and extra staff time. There would be $0 expended to collect this revenue through property tax. And there's a common misnomer that resident tax is a means for the town to collect a tax from all of its apartment renters. This is simply not true. We have no way of knowing who these renters are unless they happen to register a motor vehicle. Many renters in town are UNH students and drive vehicles registered in their parents' names. And the parents live in other towns or other states, so we have no knowledge of them at all. And also, the rental population is a very transient population and virtually impossible to keep track of. Every year, when we send the bills out, approximately 1,000 of them come back. And of the remaining, 2,000 of them go uncollected because they're gone. The cost per household for an average homeowner would actually be less if resident tax were collected through property tax. The average homeowner would pay $12.14 at the current rates and assessments rather than $10 for each person living in the home. And I'd like to share a real life example with you. I chose a resident with a last name beginning with A who's a longtime, single-family property homeowner. Their three children reside with them and they paid $50 in resident, resident taxes this year. Using their property assessment, this $50 amounts to a tax rate of 27 cents per thousand. If all the properties, including the commercial, industrial, and multifamily units, shared in paying the revenue collected through resident tax, in other words, if resident tax was collected through property tax, this family would only be paying $12.83, equivalent to a tax rate of seven cents per 1,000, which is 20 cents less per 1,000 than what they are paying this year. And finally, all but 10 of New Hampshire's 234 cities and towns have repealed this resident tax to just this past year. To continue collecting resident tax, the process of assessing and collecting will need to be changed to comply with state statutes and may even necessitate additional expenses. So with all of this, I brought Donna along because Donna has been in the town clerk's and tax collector's office much longer than I am. And she has a lot more experience with this, this whole process of collecting resident tax. If you have any questions, she's going to help me field them. But it's our respectful recommendation that the town council act to repeal resident tax effective March 31, 2008. And taking this action now, even though it's nine months before the new tax year, would enable the town to collect resident taxes through the remaining of tax year 2007, while at the same time allowing for proper consideration in the upcoming budget process. And again, if you have any questions about the, I know you did receive a lot of data and a lot of statistics and information. If you have any questions about that, we'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
May I have a question for Ms. Benvenuti? Okay, I do.
Okay.
I know we talked earlier today, but it's a couple of questions. On the chart that has the revenue, I was just a little confused. And well, let me ask the first question of the administrator. If the budget revenue is like, say for 2005 was $57,000, and then the financial statements are saying $77,000, what's the abatements? What's the? There's an abatements of minus $17,000. So how's the, the revenue as actual revenue, this is what I didn't, I couldn't?
It's confusing.
Well, I, I didn't analyze what you're talking about, so I'm not prepared to answer that right now. But the abatements are something that are processed by request of the town clerk's office.
So the, are the abatements, from our conversation earlier, the abatements, that's what, is that when I'm over 65, so I'm not have to pay it?
No. You're, if you're over 65 or under age 18, you're exempt from resident tax. The abatements result from when we get through the entire tax year and now we're beginning to collect the next tax years because there is no means to lien someone's properties. I mean, I could go attach their shadows or what have you, but that hasn't been done in an awfully long time by a tax collector. So what happens when you reach the end of the tax year and you're beginning to collect for the new tax year? Those residents who, we don't know where they are or how to contact them or how to collect, it's abated rather than.
So it's basically wiped off.
And what happens with the revenue, this is the, the very deceiving a part about resident taxes. Because when you look at these numbers, you see the financial statements, you see the annual reports. If you're looking at the financial statements, the revenue that you see is what's billed because that's how towns do their accounting. Once we issue the bills, and we try to issue as many bills as we can to anybody we think lives in the town of Newmarket, once those bills are issued, that is automatically booked as revenue. What's actually collected, if people would look in the annual report to the tax collector's MS61, what's actually collected gets reported there. And there's a, the difference pretty much reflects the difference between what's billed and the abatements.
And then this is a question for the administrator. I, I know the organization I work for received a tax property inventory form from the town of Newfields. I'd never seen one before. And it made us list all the properties owned by the organization as well as the residents of the property, which in this case was nobody since it's undeveloped land. But Newmarket stopped doing that about 20 years ago, which was before Becky. So I'm wondering if you have any knowledge of why we stopped doing that? And if that would, if the council wanted to continue doing the residence tax, which from what you've presented, it doesn't make sense to me. But if we did the property inventory form, then we would get the residents because the property owners would have to respond. If they don't, then, so is that the, so if you know why we stopped doing it? Is because of the hassle or?
It was before me too. I have absolutely no idea why you did, but I know a lot of towns stopped because it was an encumbrancing process.
There's only about 150 towns that still use that form.
That is more than the majority. But I can see, I can see why. I mean, especially for somebody that owns a lot of rental properties, it's kind of a nightmare.
The, the question, if I could, that you're going to have to deal with is that the, the adjustment we're going to be making is the amount of projected revenues that we have in the budget, okay? If we anticipate $60,000 from, from, for anticipated income from the residence tax, then that means that 60,000, that's a $60,000 automatic increase in the tax rate. And I guess that's the thing that, that we haven't been dealing with. And I understand and I agree with, with the math that Becky has gone through as far as the number of people in the household and what that can mean. But the, the real issue is that's $60,000 added to your tax rate. You know, not necessarily added to your tax rate, it's $60,000 worth of more revenue you're going to have to come from. So yes, it is, it's added to your tax rate.
All right, Counselor Glennon, and then Counselor Jarvis?
I, I fully support your recommendation. So therefore, I'm not sure if we should do this in the form of a resolution, but I would like to move this discussion for council action for, and I'll refer to the chair here as far as the schedule is concerned, for other items for the July business meeting so that we can at least start the action process. This is great information. I was reading it this evening and I was just like totally blown away to what Ashley does. And you've been telling us this all along, so.
Well, it's really, unless you're in, honestly, unless you're in the office every day through an entire year, you can't possibly, you, you don't have the ability to understand what it really entails and the costs associated with it. It's incredible.
And you did a phenomenal job, great job too. So I'd like to suggest we move this to the August. Is that soon enough?
It's, you know, completely up to you. I'm just bringing the information.
Well, I explained this to Ms. Benvenuti today, that I was hoping we would be able to have the final decision on this when we have the budget. I, I totally don't, I'm not disagreeing with anything she's saying about how much time and hassle it is, but I, I want to look at the picture of the budget, what revenues and expenditures we're expecting, increases in those areas. Because seven cents was the estimate, I think, is not a significant amount of money. But it needs to be looked at in the whole picture.
So you suggest that we put this off by April?
That's my, that's my suggestion. But if the council feels like, I don't care what the impact is or what other expenditures or revenues, then let's just do it now so the issue's resolved and everybody's, we're done with it. I'm okay with it being acted on it. I'm just saying my preference would be, we're going to have a new town administrator, we're going to have a budget presented to us in December, January, that's still time enough to save, save the hassle of starting the process.
That's my question. Are we restricted by any RSA that says we have to wait a period of time once we take action on this to, if we said eliminate it, do we have to? Okay.
Not to my knowledge. I haven't seen, I, I put in your package basically what the language of a resolution would be. And it's taken directly from the RSA. That is the optional collection of resident tax. And it sets forth what the legislative body actually needs to vote verbatim to repeal resident tax.
That's in the first, second bullet, the second indented paragraph?
The, the only thing I think that you need to keep in mind, and Brian alluded to that, is that, is as you go through the budgeting process, I think it would be helpful to the town to just, you know, to have meaningful discussions about, you know, it is a tax. People are paying a tax in this hand and a tax in this hand. And it will affect the tax rate. So just to do it in a time that.
I withdraw my suggestion and move it to a business budget process. If that's soon enough for you.
And there's, the process that, the, the other piece of that is, is there will have to be some significant changes made if we were to continue. And the bills need to go out by April 1st. And that process is going to be, it's going to take, it's not a month's process. It's going to take some time and it's going to have to be some adjustments in how it's handled in the town. So that's.
I think, I think in the past, at least a few times, we've given some direction to the town administrator early in the budgeted process, like give us a budget that has a 3% or a 4% increase in total costs. So as part of that discussion, which would usually be in October-ish, I'd say, we could say, give us a budget that doesn't include revenue from the residence tax. And then that way, when we get the budget, we see it from the start. I mean, that may be, that might be the way to, to get the best of both worlds, so. Any other, Counselor Jarvis, I believe?
I was prepared to make a motion to repeal the resident tax tonight. My thought process was that whether you call it residency tax or whether you call it another seven cents on the property taxes, it's all coming out of the same pocket. So it's not, and I think if, I think that we have clear documentation of, it's not going to, it's not going to affect people financially and it's going to be a negative financial impact by moving it to the tax rate. So I'd actually like to make a motion to repeal the residence tax, resident tax effective March 31, 2008, and begin collecting this revenue from property tax.
I'll second it.
I'll take the prerogative as chair to make a couple of comments. One is, we didn't post this item as a discussion piece on the agenda. So nobody knows it's coming up tonight except for Becky, staff members, people who got the packet in advance. And secondly, at a workshop, we don't make motions on new items especially. That's the general practice. So I would prefer that we put it to a business meeting at the least. If, if the council wants to move forward, fine, but, I mean, because if we did it at the, at the July or August business meeting and people disagreed vehemently and they wanted the chance, they could come and do, talk to us at that meeting. I'm not saying we're going to have mobs of people saying, here, I want to pay the residence tax, but I doubt it. I think you'll have a lot of people saying, thanks Becky for telling the council what to do on this issue.
If you want, we've just, we've talked about it before, not in full discussion, but Becky's brought it up to us before and then we've moved it. So it has been a discussion, but I'd be happy to move to withdraw my motion if it's, the second is withdrawn and make a motion that we move this to the August business meeting for a decision.
That's what you started, yeah.
Did you say that earlier?
He has started, he has started that, but then he.
The July business, can we do it at the July business meeting?
The July business meeting is the 11th because the 4th is the holiday. So we're going to get the RFP that night. I think we should be able to do this.
Okay, so the July business meeting?
That's fine.
July.
Is that, would you like to second that, Counselor Quox?
Sure.
Okay. So we have a motion to, thank you for listening to my request. So we have a motion to move to the July business meeting for final action. And it's been seconded by Counselor Quox. Is there any further discussion? Oh, there is a light, sorry. Counselor Branch?
Ms. Benvenuti, what is your timeframe that you have to have this done by?
For, for my office?
Yes.
December? At the, at the, I mean, we definitely need a decision by December, I think, in order for the town to make, in a hurry, reasonable adjustments to how we're going to be properly administering this.
Just wanted to make sure we had time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments or discussion? All right, Erica, would you be willing to call the roll?
Counselor Plasky?
Aye.
Counselor Fats?
Aye.
Counselor Branch?
Aye.
Counselor Jarvis?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Ms. Glover, monthly update of Phase 2 Main Street project. And I think in your boxes, there was a beautiful blue sheet.
This is yours or mine?
This is my stuff. You go to your box before you?
Yes, I put it right here. This is right here, thank you.
Okay, Julie, please go ahead.
Thank you. The town administrator signed the contract with Severino the end of May. And we've established a pre-construction meeting with Severino for July 12. And then later that day, beginning at 6:00 PM, there will be a public information night to hear a presentation by Severino about their schedule and their work plan and to give residents and businesses an opportunity to meet Severino and, and ask them questions directly. I would certainly recommend to anyone who's been following this and who will be impacted, which quite frankly is all, would be any resident or business owner in the town of Newmarket, that if you're just going to go to any meeting, one meeting, this would really be the one to go to. So again, I just want to strongly urge people to attend the meeting on July 12. It's going to be in the auditorium. And it will also be televised on Cable Channel 13. And I'm also working with Underwood, Severino, and the Department of Public Works to get the electronic message boards in place for the week of July 9, which would be two weeks prior to the end. which would be two weeks prior to the anticipated start date of construction. Ongoing meetings, I had a meeting just earlier this week with Underwood, Regan Electric, and Rick Malaski to talk about the specifics of the electrical connections and how that is going to work. And this meeting was great for me. I think it, it cleared up a lot of questions that I had, and perhaps if I could just spend a couple of minutes talking about how this works, it might clear up a couple of questions for everybody. Severino is responsible for placing the conduits underground. Those would be the tubes through which the wires are pulled, are carried. Public Service is responsible for pulling the new primary wires and secondary wires through those conduits. The electrical contractor is responsible for going to each property, disconnecting the existing meter that is serviced from overhead, installing a new meter box, taking the electrical connection from inside the building that had been feeding the overhead meeting, meter, and putting it into the new box and making the connections for the new meter for the underground connection. Now, that's generally how it's going to work. There are actually some properties that don't need to have anything done because they are currently being fed from the rear of their building, and that's not going to change. And then obviously, there are multi-unit buildings that have to have, you know, multi-unit meters and so forth. But, but generally, that's how that's going to be done. In a few cases, there will probably need to be some work done inside a building, and I think it's at that point that, that it becomes questionable as to who, or there's some question, let me say, as to who's gonna carry the cost for that. But Underwood has factored into the, the project budget the cost to do the work as I just described, to, to disconnect the electrical from the existing meter and install the meter box for the new meter that's fed from underground. Once that's done, PSNH comes back, pulls the secondary wires from the, well, actually, a secondary goes from a transformer to a junction box, and then the junction box feeds a number of properties. Then they pull it, make the final connection, and plug the new meter in. So-
So do we have a cost estimate for what the impact might be for those properties that have to do work that wouldn't be covered by the town?
No. I mean, it would be a case of if someone's wiring might not be quite up to code or the, there may be an instance where their panel is, and disconnect are too far away from the existing meter for a proper connection to be made. But we're gonna continue to work with Regan to identify each one of those properties and then meet with those property owners. But based on what I heard Monday, I think that that's the exception rather than the rule.
Okay.
There was a meeting held, a public meeting held on May 17th at Town Hall to discuss the flooding in the bowl issue. Underwood led this meeting, and it, it was very well attended, and they received some really good feedback from property owners as to what happened with their properties and flooding from both the Mother's Day flood and the Patriots' Day flood this year. And I know that you're gonna discuss that further in the meeting, so. I, with Diane Hardy and Counselor Glennon, met with the Finance Committee of the Rivermore Landing Condominium Association at their request to discuss the possibility of the town acquiring their parking deck. It was a really good meeting, but what came out of it was that the town certainly may be interested but would not be able to act, obviously within the 60-day timeframe that they were looking at, because they're looking at starting the repairs to their parking deck in 60 days. So we did say that if anything was gonna be done, it would probably be like a long-term, long-range plan, you know, five or 10 years, but that could certainly warrant further discussion if the town council so desired. Also on May 17th, volunteers from Timberland cleaned up the Riverwalk from the recent flood damage, so it looks quite nice down there. The new benches and trash receptacles have been ordered for the Riverwalk, and we anticipate that they'll be delivered, I think, right around the 1st of August. And then Public Works will install them once they arrive. Continue to work with Fish and Game on the boat ramp. That project is still moving forward, and I'm just working with Fish and Game to schedule the first public meeting to review the plans. Still working with the property owner of 41 Exeter Street to hopefully resolve her issues with turning lanes and driveway access and, and so forth. I met with the Newmarket Main Street Corporation just last week about their desire to place, and I believe it's an informational kiosk downtown with your, the, the blue packet, as Brian called it, is some information from the Newmarket Main Street Corporation. It's just a preliminary design, that's kind of what they first came up with, if you're looking at the little round brick structure. And they are proposing that it be located in front of the Willie House, somewhat between the Willie House and 98 Main Street. So I said that I would present this information to the council, just to kind of float it out there, to get it on the council radar screen, but I also did tell them at the meeting the other night that certainly any object that's going to be permanently placed on a town sidewalk would require town council approval, especially since I think it's their plan to turn ownership of this over to the town. So it's obviously gonna warrant further discussion from the council. And, but I think at the point where they feel they're at their design stage where they want, they'll come back and present it to the council. But I did say that I would at least get it in front of you to maybe just start getting people thinking about it. I also did discuss with them their use of the Spring Street Lot for the Heritage Festival, and I enclosed a very teeny tiny map of their proposed layout. They told me that right now they're intending to use the layout that's at the top of the page, which is contained mostly on the paved portion of the Spring Street Lot. And again, obviously, I still continue to meet with property owners, business owners, the Downtown Tiff, Riverwalk, the NCDC, and many, many others, so.
Counselor Jarvis has a question, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
During the Main Street meeting, did they discuss the idea of having that kiosk down by where the, where redoing the garden by the bus stop?
Arbor Park.
The Arbor Park?
No, they didn't raise that as an issue. I had asked in a follow-up email whether they had considered any other locations, but I didn't get a response, so.
Personally, I think I would like to see it there when people get off, off and on the bus. It would be right there. And if that's something that we're about to redo, whether or not that would be something that could be discussed with the gardeners, and thank you.
Counselor Glennon?
That's a very good question that Counselor Jarvis had, 'cause we're gonna be meeting, I believe, next week with the designer for the Arbor Garden. And that's a question that I would raise at that point, see if that's a good location. However, this meeting you had last week, just so the council knows this, I've been asked by the chair to be the rep on the council to the Main Street Corporation Board, and I have not been informed of any meetings, which will be taken care of in the future. So I'll, I'll be bringing these concerns and ideas back and forth and working with Julie to do that, 'cause Julie and I had a discussion today about this, our issue. So I just want the council to know when it comes, by time for our reports this evening. This is where I will be talking about it now, because I won't have the thing at that point, because I didn't attend the meeting. But there's also electrical needs that we need to look at too, that the, the Main Street Corporation is looking at to be incorporated somewhere in the Arbor Garden for future Heritage Festival festivities back on the, what do you call that, the parking lot area, so. That's all I have for now, but I'll report other things later. Thank you.
If you can take the feedback, I was on the, the Main Street Board when they discussed this idea, and I don't quite understand its use well enough. I don't think it'll function well enough in our town. The idea came from the one in Portsmouth, but Portsmouth has a much bigger downtown and more activity that warrant having a volunteer in there. So it, I, I, I think the council needs to endorse the concept before they do any more work. Because we haven't done that, I don't believe. If we have, please remind me when.
And that's the message I will carry back to that board, to let them know.
I mean, I, I, there's a couple of areas that I'd love to have their creativity and help on. There is the, you know, we had talked about the historic kind of plaques that talk, that, um, that show old photographs and like a little brief history being put in, six or seven. I'm not sure where that is. That needs to get pretty far along, because in its one year, we're gonna be doing it, and that's where they need to go. So that's much more interesting, important to me than this. You know, and I know Mr. Alpern's been successful in getting historic market, but I'm sure there's other ones for the downtown quarter that would be nice to start applying for. Hopefully, they could help, or the Historical Society could help on that, so. Counselor Quox?
Yeah, I, I'm not crazy over the placement of that. It's kinda cumbersome. I think it's gonna interfere with foot traffic and, and sight distance too. You've got a, you've got a road there pulling in and out, and I'm not crazy over it.
Just a slight comment.
Sure. Counselor Glennon?
Just keep in mind, though, that what you're looking at is, in the current state of what the downtown looks like right now, they're envisioning all of this, they stuck it in there as a location, but once everything's done, such as that area there, which is gonna be the center focus point, this is where they're tying that in, really.
The sidewalk will be much, much wider there.
Yeah, much wider there.
The sidewalk is, I think, either 18 or 20 feet wide at that point.
Yeah.
But still, it is a sidewalk obstruction.
And something I didn't mention, a note I made, most of the foot traffic is on the, if we put it in the Arbor Garden, most of the foot traffic is on the other side of the street where all the stores are. So I don't know how many people, probably just the people coming off and on the bus would get to read it, but you've got more, more people walking, and it'd be more visible.
I wouldn't suggest we put it in the Arbor Garden, but near it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Glover?
The only other quick comment I'd like to make, I don't know whether any of you noticed, but on the picture that, that shows it in place, I asked the architect who did this for Newmarket Main Street Corporation to take out the telephone pole and the power lines. If you were to go out there now, there's actually a telephone pole almost directly in front of it, so.
Very clever.
They've magically disappeared.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is number five. Discussion of draft policies on credit card and travel reimbursement. We also have a scheduled speaker at 8:30, so if we get to the agenda at 8:30, we will, and she arrives, she will do her presentation, which I believe is about 15 minutes long. So we might have to interrupt whatever agenda item we're on. I tried to schedule it, but I was optimistic at how far we got. We're doing pretty good, though. Okay, so this policy was originally drafted by Don after the MRI report came back and was identified as some of the areas to improve on. And in hopes of moving forward on those things, I asked him to prepare them so we could start discussing them tonight, so. Our goal is to review them, make changes, so, and give feedback to Don, and so we can adopt them at a future meeting. So let's talk about the credit card policy first. Counselor Quox?
With the credit card, I saw, let me see, it's back here.
It's the first policy of the two.
This one here, credit card scope, documentation, termination, credit, on determination or transfer, and I didn't mark this, that's why I had a hard time following it. A cardholder who fraudulently uses the credit card after separation from the town is subject to legal. No, that was not it. Oh, okay, lost or stolen credit cards. Uh, make it, no. Why don't you go to someone else, Brian? Till I find myself. I marked everything else here, and I didn't mark that, if you can call me back.
No problem.
Thank you.
And maybe, I saw a lot of red on yours. I saw some red on mine. There might be other ones. So let's do it page by page. That way, we don't have everybody jumping around. So the first page, which is the purposes, scope section. Counselor Jarvis?
I'm on the second page.
Okay, anybody for the first page?
I am.
Counselor Glennon?
On the scope, the town administrator will make all decisions regarding issuing of individual credit cards and establishing of any and all additional controls for their use. In the section of, in, of all additional controls for their use, I would like to add to that, and again, I don't wanna put in there what council approval, because it is the administrator's responsibility. However, I would like to add to that area upon review by the council, so the council can review any of those additional controls that would be put on. Not, not approve, but review those controls, 'cause it is our responsibility as an oversight. So if we could make, you know, suggestions or something like that.
How about we just cut that part of the sentence out?
Issuing?
Just issuing. I mean, I, my expectation would be that the administrator might say, you can use this car, but it's only to buy gas for that truck. That's the kind of limitation they might say. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, see-
Or it's only for this trip, when you're done, give it back, or, I don't know. Does that, do you know, understand what his intent was with that clause?
Generally, you know, that would be the thing, and there would be some limitations put on the individual and the usage.
Perhaps you ought to put it in there.
That would generally be worked out with the town administrator and the finance director.
Yeah, 'cause right, right now, it sounds like you would be putting new restrictions on if we approved this, that, the way that I got that, the wording of that. So perhaps you're right, Mr. Chairman, to remove that.
Establishment of additional controls specific to an individual's use?
Yeah.
Is that, I mean, as long as they're as restrict, as long as they don't conflict with this policy, that's strengthening. I don't know.
I, I just have a real problem with additional controls for their use.
Limitations on their use?
Does that have any and all limitations for their use? Yeah, okay, limitations would be better, as opposed to additional controls. It almost sounds like they could rewrite that policy.
Okay.
So what do we take out?
Well, if the council agrees, what I was suggesting, based on your comments and the reading of it, is to say, and the establishment of additional limitations on an individual's use of a credit card. So long as they're consistent with this policy.
Okay.
So what did you say, Brian, would be, all limitations on the usage?
Establishment of additional limitations on an individual's use of a credit card so long as they are consistent with this policy. Okay, anything else for page one? Okay, page two. Anyone for page two? Just raise your hands in the lights, or you're gonna go crazy. Counselor Jarvis, then Counselor Quox?
I've read this through a couple of times and gone over a few things with Mr. Parnell in the Finance Department, and one of the concerns was that the, to, not to exceed the limit of $500 for their, could hinder their rec department when they go on their field trips with all of, when they take every, all the campers out and need to pay for everybody at Water Country or something like that. So I'm concerned about that $500 limit. So I would suggest that maybe we just ask, I'm not sure if there's a, a limit that the council is comfortable with in putting there, or need, or, or whether or not we need to put a, a single purch- I mean, 'cause that's a single purchase would be getting 200 kids Water Country passes or something.
I don't have that many.
Something like that would be pre-approved. Otherwise, if you know you're bringing 20 kids to Water Country-
Right, but they use their credit card.
Yes, but you know it's gonna go over $500, so you get the preapproval.
So what, that's your, I was on the same area in my notes. So this reads, "A single purchase may comprise, comprise multiple items. Unless previously approved," I wrote, "by whom?" So, "by the town administrator, comma, "the amount of, the total amount of a single purchase may not exceed the limit of $500." I would be surprised if we were in an emergency- I would be surprised if we were in emergency circumstances that would require a five hundred dollar expenditure. And if they were such, and they overspent, I think we could understand that.
So unless previously approved by the town administrator, the total amount of each single purchase may not exceed the limit of five hundred dollars?
Yeah. I mean, that's once, because it begs the question, who's previously approving it? It's either the town administrator or the department head.
Right. Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
Counsel, Counsel Glennon?
Would we, if you had a situation such as that, let's just take over the expenditure of five hundred dollars and knowing in advance their scheduled trip, um, would you not want to do a purchase order?
You, I mean, you wouldn't do a purchase order for, I mean, when they take, and maybe the rec department wants to speak on, on this, but when they go, um, it's not, they're not sure how many kids they're going to have on that day that show up, and when they go, they would just swipe their credit card. So, and a lot of those places might not, you, you might not be able to say, bill the town of Newmarket. Or can we bill them in advance? You don't want to pay for kids that might not show up. So I don't know how they would do a, a purchase order for some of those things.
Uh, okay, I guess my question is, if the children were going to the, say, Water Country, would they have to pay the rec department, and then the rec department pays it all by a credit card?
I'll let Annalise come up, if that's okay, with everybody, if that's okay.
Yes, please come up.
Yes, they do. Um, they have to pay by the Wednesday of the week before on these trips for the summer camp program. And then they pay the rec department, we take the credit card, and we pay them. But we do not know till usually the morning of, because it depends on who actually shows up that day for camp.
Okay, do they lose their money?
Yes.
So you would have a purchase order?
If they, well, they lose their, if they call us before eight thirty that morning?
Yeah.
Then we would know. But if a child is sick or something happens, you just don't. Purchase orders, they don't usually take. It's mostly credit cards. And some of them won't even take credit cards, and we have to go with checks. It just depends on the organization and where we're going.
Yeah, okay. I, I'm just concerned that we're trying to tighten it up, and yet we're making exceptions here.
Can I give you an example?
Yeah, sure.
The last day of camp, we take them all roller skating. That is probably about fifteen hundred dollars when you take that many children roller skating. If we got, that we take and we give the credit card to them, and they pay the fifteen hundred dollars on the credit card. So that's more than five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and the question for me is, I don't really care. As long as, it doesn't matter if it's paid by check in advance, cash there, or a credit card, you still need to provide a receipt.
Absolutely.
Documentation, and if it's not justified, that'll be a problem. So the question for me, it doesn't, I mean, it makes sense to have some kind of limit. I'm not sure if five hundred dollars makes sense, but the key thing is the documentation to support the expenditure was appropriate.
So if I read this correctly, then it's five hundred dollars is the limit, unless it gets prior approval from administrator or the department head?
Administrator, it says here.
Yeah.
I suggested-
In some other areas, it says department heads in other areas. So I was just wondering if we're going to be consistent and have it all go through one area?
That's a discussion for us.
Okay.
Uh, Counsel Quox?
Thanks for the example, um-
Go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to know, how many cards are we talking about? Are we talking about one card, or are we talking about a card for each department? How many credit cards are we talking about?
Policy leaves that decision to the town administrator.
Okay. Um, I've had some feedback from some town administrators, and, uh, I believe they feel that we, town shouldn't have any credit cards. And I'm wondering if with the new town administrator coming in shortly, that we should basically table this, call on all credit cards that we now have, and wait until the new town administrator comes in and let him make that decision. Especially with the forensic audit going on now and everything else. I, I think that's something that, uh, uh, because whatever reports I've had have been that credit cards are not good for a town.
Well, could you explain why?
I'm not a town administrator, but in their view, they did not feel that credit cards were good for a town to have. Sometimes they might have just one credit card to be used for special or certain occasions, but not several people having credit cards. And with all the, uh, this is a, law can happen with that. And, uh, and I think, I, I don't know how a credit rating for a town works, but I know privately, every time you terminate a credit card, even if you're in good standing and made that payment at all times, when you terminate a credit card, you lose points in your, your credit rating. I don't know how that works with the town. I'm not, um, but I don't think the town should have more than one credit card.
Okay. Okay, uh, Counsel Jarvis?
I think that, um, on the end of, of page one, where it says the scope, which we just went over, it says, "The town administrator will make all decisions regarding the issuing of individual cards and the establishment," and then we added the limitations. Um, that gives our new town administrator the out to say, nobody has a credit card. I think we should form a policy that gets in place as soon as possible until that time, but this would give our new town administrator the authority to say, no credit cards. And currently, we don't have, um, and, and maybe it's been changed since, since I've been chair, but currently, there are credit cards in the rec department and one other credit card. Our town administrator no longer has a credit card. There's a, well, there were seven, the last, you heard, but those, a lot of those credit cards have been turned in and canceled. So there are three in the rec department, I believe, and one Home Depot card, and that is it, as far as-
I think the police department still has theirs.
Oh, and the, the police, right, so the DPW Police and Rec Department.
Okay. Um, Counsel, uh, oh, Minister Dixon, then Counsel Glennon?
I, I certainly, um, believe and always have that the fewer credit cards on the town's name is, the better. Okay, I don't disagree with that. Particularly, when this came about, it became impossible for the rec department to function without credit cards, so that was pretty obvious, there was a need there. Of course, the police department has always had one. Uh, I will say this, that I didn't like it particularly, because they need somebody's name. That somebody's name was mine, and I didn't like that. Uh, as, you know, I have my own credit cards, and I manage those, and if I'm late paying, well, that's my fault, okay? But if somebody else is late paying for me, that still affects my credit rating. I don't like that. So I don't particularly, I'm not particularly fond, as administrator, of having town credit cards.
Um-
But I do recognize the need for it.
Counsel Glennon was next.
Yeah. Um, I, I'm going to have to agree with Counsel Quox here, because, um, if the council remembers, when we were doing the interview process of a couple of the candidates, both of them spoke of the credit card, and they were both saying that if they had their choice, there would be, you know, no credit cards. So I would definitely, um, support Mr. Dixon and Counsel Quox on perhaps waiting. Well, Mr. Dixon's concerned about credit cards being out there, and Mrs. Quox's concerned about possibly, you know, waiting until a new town administrator comes in. Uh, think about it, we haven't had a policy, and another month or so, possibly, maybe six weeks, we'll have a policy with the new town administrator. That's just my thoughts.
Counsel Plasky?
In this policy, also should include store accounts, where you don't actually have a physical card. You go down to Hopkins and say, put it on the town account. There's no actual physical plastic charge card that gets swiped, or whatever. Um, that should be mentioned in here.
Or it should probably, I, I would suggest it might be a separate policy. Because they're, they're a little different in the nuances of them, but that's a good point to consider. Um, I'll let you go, Counsel Quox, next, but I'd like to make my own comments. Um, I don't, we're not going to have a town administrator in six weeks. I just, it takes that much longer. They have to give proper notice. We have a town administrator. We're not going to have the new town administrator in six weeks. They're going to get proper notice of three to four, five, six weeks, so. I also think this is not the first priority they're going to be trying to address. And, um, unless, I'm not aware of flagrant violations, I'm not aware of any violations, but if there's flagrant violations that people are aware of that would make us think that credit cards are being abused, then let's recognize them as a legitimate financial tool that we have to put the, um, proper controls on. Um, I do see the, the, that there are circumstances where they probably, it's just more convenient to use, but I also think there are circumstances where it's a lot more convenient to use, and we have to balance that. And so, you know, that's, um, that, that's my thinking. I don't want to abandon adopting a, a new policy to address the issues and then eliminate all the credit cards like that, um, at this point in time. So Counsel Quox?
Um, another problem I might see with the new town administrator coming in is if, if the current administrator decides X amount of people should have a credit card, which is fine, um, and then the new town administrator coming in doesn't believe in them at all, and he's going to have to ask those people for their cards back, and I think that might not be a good start. So that's just a concern I would have.
Counsel LeBranch, and then Counsel Jarvis.
Basically, what I see this policy doing is getting us started. We, we don't have a starting point with anything for a credit card policy, or as we go on, travel policy. For me, it's a good idea to get this going, work on it. Basically, we're trying to make the town administrator the responsible party to determine how he wants to enforce it. So if we adopt that, at least when the new town administrator comes in, he's got a policy in place that he can change, keep, do away with completely, after going through the council, obviously. But to me, I, I think it's important that we at least get the groundwork laid.
Counsel Jarvis, excuse me?
Um, I think, uh, in looking at the credit card bills and, and knowing where most of, um, the money is spent on the credit cards, it is the summer camp, which is what starts next week, is it? So if summer camp starts next week, and they're going to need the credit cards, I, I would not support a decision to get rid of everyone's credit cards at this time. Um, and as far as anticipating what our future town administrator may or may not want, um, I suggest that we go forth with the draft credit card policy so we can get the policy in place, um, so that we have a policy in place until the new administrator decides to make it a priority to change this if they see it necessary. Um, but without this policy, we don't have a policy in place, and credit card use is going to be starting pretty strongly in about a week. So I'd like to support that we continue to go through this policy.
Okay, um, we've got about five minutes till our scheduled presenter. So if we can go on to page two, I think we're at. Any comments on page two? This is about the use of the credit card. It outlines the conditions and reasons, uh, allowed uses. And then also talks about documentation, reconciliation, and payment procedures. All right, page three. I'll start with a comment. Number four. All right, it's just, uh, I think it needs to be grammatically rewritten, slightly a run-on sentence, um, where it says, "Payments will be made by invoice each time the credit," that probably is two different sentences versus a comma. So if I understand correctly, um, I go out and use a credit card and I buy, say, um, a new pump for the town. You know, it's an emergency situation, flooding, whatever, and we bring it back. When it says, "Payments will be made by invoice," that, I'm not quite sure what that means. So can you help me understand what that means?
Well, generally, you would have, uh, the invoice of the credit card company, okay, and some sort of receipt.
You get the statement, yep.
Yep, because when you sign for a credit card, you know, uh-
Yeah, you get the, so I, I get, I'm the department head. I get the, I get the department's credit card. There's seven hundred dollars. It's due in three weeks. I attach all the receipts, submit it with a cover sheet that says, there's an invoice, please pay this bill, or. I'm just not sure what, if I was an employee and it says, "Payments will be made by invoice," I don't understand what that means.
Okay, that means by the credit card invoice itself, not by per transaction, okay, it's not-
Okay, so can we say by the credit card's monthly statement?
Yeah, you should say statement, yeah.
Yeah. And generally speaking, you know, there'll be probably some supporting-
Right.
-statement from, if you're paying a, an invoice, there would be an invoice that could be attached and submitted.
Or the credit card receipt.
Yes, or both.
Okay, any other questions on page three? I had another comment. Um, in the section of approval, the, the last three paragraphs probably, I would suggest, need a separate header, like exchanges and refunds, because they're not about approval. They're about if we have to return the item, or if there's a problem of dispute, then that's what it's about. So maybe exchanges, refunds, and disputes. And then in the second paragraph, this is just a minor thing, it says, the second paragraph from the bottom of that page, the second sentence says, "Finance will notify the cardholder." I just think it probably should say, "The finance department will notify," it's minor. Okay, thirty seconds, page four. Let's check. Anybody comments on page four? Or were there any more on page three? I didn't see any lights. Page four. Uh, the only suggestion I had was that the personal credit cards, um, after the first sentence, it probably should say, "Consistent with the town's travel policy," or in parentheses, "See travel policy." Just, it started making me think about the other policy that we are going to review later tonight. Counsel Glennon?
Um, the other part of that would be, uh, the employee's signature, witness signature. I'm not comfortable with witness. Witness could be anybody.
Where's that? Yeah, just make it a town department head.
Yeah, department head signature, um-
Or supervisor's signature?
I would say either department head or, uh, finance.
Generally, I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with, a, a lot of documents I do, when you sign a purchase and sales agreement, somebody witnesses.
Yeah.
Just so you-
So witness of this signature, and I'm assuming that this would go into their packet when they came on board, so their whole personnel policy, credit card, their department head would be going through all of those things with them.
Correct. However, witness could be, "I work next to you. I need to go use the credit card." You're going to be a witness to this.
No, this is a witness that they've read the document.
Oh, they've read this. All right, so then it should be department head, that's what I say.
Okay.
Or supervisor, you're correct. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Department head.
That's a Meyer thing.
Well, it could be department head, or if you, at some point in time, have a human resource person.
Yeah, well, we can modify it then.
Could write supervisor's signature. Whoever their supervisor is.
Okay.
Either one of those. Something other than witness.
Okay. Any other comments? Would the council like to move this for, with the revisions to final action at any point?
I'll make that motion, and I'll move it to the July business meeting?
We can try.
If not, the August business meeting.
I have one question, though.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you both. Counsel Jarvis made the motion, Counsel LeBranch seconded it, and Counsel Glennon, you have a question?
Yeah, quick question. What is the limit on these credit cards now?
On, on three of them, I believe, having to do with recreation. Uh, the finance director just increased those to fifteen thousand.
On each one?
Yes.
When would they ever have to use fifteen thousand dollars?
There have been times, because the previous limit was ten thousand, and there was times that that didn't prove adequate, and I guess, and Lisa's here, maybe she could address that a little more than I can.
Remember, that's fifteen thousand dollars in one month, not-
Oh.
Not one purchase.
Oh, okay, thank you. That's, that's it.
That's all you need?
Yeah, that's all I need.
Well, actually, if you don't mind, I-
At any given time on the card.
Just like, you know, it's, you know, it's a month of this-
It carries a balance.
It's, it's four field trips a week for eight weeks, because you're sending groups in different respects.
So you might have sixteen credit card purchases in a month.
And, because a lot of kids, and, yeah.
But they can't exceed fifteen thousand a month time, is that correct?
Well, if they do, then you-
At any point.
You, you, you're getting in trouble.
Charges for going above your credit limit.
Over your limit.
It's literally only that time with the field trip, time that the problem occurred.
Yeah, kind of blew me away there for a minute.
Yeah, that's the only time, other than that.
Well, you know how it works. You, you get the credit card statement, and suddenly, your credit has increased to more than your annual salary.
Yeah.
I know how that works. Any other comments or questions? So we have a motion to move it to the July business meeting. And seconded, please call a roll.
Counsel Plasky?
Aye.
Counsel Quox?
Aye.
Counsel LeBranch?
Aye.
Counsel Jarvis?
Aye.
Counsel Glennon?
Aye.
Counsel Hart?
Aye.
Motion carries.
At this point, we'll take a five-minute recess to allow the guest speaker to set up.
Good point. Get some water, I guess.
Hey, you guys before. I mentioned I was going to write it this weekend?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
What's this for? Oh, okay. Good. Did you? Oh, did you, oh, yeah. Did you, um?
I got some directions right here. You're supposed to start at number five.
Locate the remote control, and press the power button.
I'm going to take my suggestion.
I'm also thinking. Yeah, maybe Guinness will do it.
30 seconds, it says.
You already pressed the on button or something?
I did.
I knew you'd get it. I turned it off.
Maybe we'll need the five minutes.
There's a light on there. How did I just come on?
It turned from red to green. Oh, there it is. Now, press the F, and at the same time, press F3, key on the notebook. So, the notebook's already on.
It's already on the screen. So, I presume the only thing you gotta worry about is the down.
You can now search slideshow. When you're done, press like, "Count," protect your CD.
Did you go away again, Erica? Did you go away again?
No. I just had this.
Vegas, nice. Here, let me give you a lucky, used to be able to say, "I'll give you a lucky quarter." Now, it's like, "I'll give you a lucky $10 by the time you get in there." No more quarter slot machines.
Oh, I could do this. That's a little too long, eh?
I can also, I can hit the key for you if you want me to, too. That's the other thing.
Oh, that's true. Um, yeah, the mouse works. Can I move the mouse?
So, forward and backward on the mouse? Is that how it works?
I think it's just. Oh, I think I went forward in this. It's slow. That would be helpful. Yeah, I'll give you a look. It'll work. I need to get my cheat sheets out. That was the time.
Yep. Okay.
Would I be the way if I stood here? No. Hey, Dana. Yes. Oh, you are? I was last year, too. Nobody ever told me when meetings were. Huh. We meet Tuesday, the second Tuesday of every month. And it's, um, at the, there's new offices at the Mill Pond Center, and that's where we meet. And what, and it's.
So, it's working?
Seven, seven o'clock.
Are you ready?
And they can go pretty long, too.
Excuse me, ma'am. Are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Is this a member of the.
Yeah, Dick Lord.
No worse than these meetings, right?
What?
No worse than these meetings.
Oh, yes. Hopefully not tonight.
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll move down there once we start. All right, so, Dana's still outside, okay. Oh, yeah.
Oh, turn the lights off.
Okay, um, can you, are we back on the air? Can you look at the TV?
We appear to be.
Okay, um.
Does Al need to be here, or no?
The, um, instructions I gave you, I think it tells us to call downstairs when you start, because then he switches the TV to show this. So, can you give me those instructions back?
That's fancy. I'm going to move down there. That way, they'll never, you'll never get to see me.
Do we have? Okay, we, we are now ready. There is no literature at this point. So, for those viewers at home that are looking at a screen that says Lamprey River Management Plan, that is the correct one. The Lamprey River Advisory Committee, which is a, which we'll learn more specifically about who they are, has requested the opportunity to present to the council and the town their draft management plan for the Lamprey River. And Sarah Callahan, who is a recently appointed representative from the town of Newmarket, and Dick Lord, who is the town of Lee?
Durham.
Durham. I'm sorry. Are here, are here tonight to, to go through the presentation. I understand it's about 15 minutes long, and at the end, we'll ask some questions, and then I'm sure we can get a copy of the actual written report for, for consideration.
Yeah, it's my understanding, because this was pre-my membership, that they were, the draft plan was sent out.
Okay.
But if you don't have a copy, I can make sure you get one. It's also available online for anybody who's interested.
Great.
On our website.
Lampreaver.org. So, at this point, we'll turn over to Sarah Callahan, and I guess, if you could turn the lights off, that'd be great. Thank you.
Uh, it'd be nice to see my notes, actually. So, thank you very much for inviting me, as I'm actually the newest member to the Lamprey River Advisory Committee, and I've been there just about three months. So, I wasn't actually a part of the whole update of the management plan, but I have, you know, read through it, and hopefully I'll be able to provide information based on the last few meetings I've been to, and my knowledge of the river. So, the Lamprey River Advisory Committee was established when the, it was designated actually as a New Hampshire State River Management. And, let's see. And at that time, the state management program only included Lee and Durham. And then when we got a wild and scenic designation, it actually extended into Epping as well as Newmarket. So, there's representatives on LRAAC from both, from Newmarket, Lee, Epping, and Durham. And so, hopefully, I'll be able to show you the slideshow, and it'll go smoothly. The reason why we updated the management plan is the original one was done in 1995, and there's obviously been changes to the Lamprey River and the land surrounding the Lamprey River, and there's been, LRAAC has made, done a lot of work for their goals that they established in 1995. So, there's been a lot of changes in those last 10 years, and so that's why they decided to update the management plan. So, all right. This is a map of the Lamprey River watershed, and the orange line actually represents the wild and scenic designation, which is the federal designation. And for the town of Newmarket, it actually starts right at the junction of the Piscassic and Lamprey Rivers. And, you gonna, next? All right. The New Hampshire Rivers Management and Protection Program, which it was designated actually in 1990, and it, the, as a designation, it prohibits construction of new dams or the transfer of water from the Lamprey out into the seacoast watersheds. It also protects the water quality and year-round flows to support a full range of natural needs and human uses. So, it's kind of, it's multidisciplinary. So, as I mentioned, in 1996, Lee, Durham, and Newmarket were designated as a wild and scenic river. And in 2000, another 12 miles was added in Epping. So, it's a total of, let's see my math, 23.5 miles is the total length of the river under designation. And this, the federal designation ensures that any federal action is consistent with protecting the river's resources, and provides assistance from the National Park Service, which has been very helpful for many of the goals and projects that we've done. And this also includes part of the, as LRAAC representing the, the wild and scenic river, it, we needed to create and implement a management plan, which is why this was created. So, there's actually eight sections to our updated management plan. And the first topic that I'd like to address is water quality. And one of LRAAC's accomplishments up to this point with regards to water quality was to create this brochure, you see up on the screen, for riverfront landowners, which explains why and how to manage their land for good water quality and wildlife habitat. And we want to continue to get the word out about good management practices and preserving water quality. So, our current goals, for the property, or for the, for the Lamprey River, are, were established because it has a high, already a high water quality level. And according to the state, it's classified as a Class B, which means that it's both swimable and fishable. And this provides a lot of, provides a great resource, therefore, for the wildlife and human use. And one of our goals at this point relating to water quality is to help identify and address stormwater issues in all four of the towns. And, and one of the things I would like to point out is that it's, we wouldn't be able to accomplish this goal unless we had good partnership with all the towns we work in, including Newmarket. Our second goal is to address in-stream flow. So, we're not just looking at water quality, we're also looking at water quantity. And one of the concerns about the Lamprey River, as many of you may have seen, is that during drought period, the water level can drop precipitously, and that affects many aspects of the use of the Lamprey River. So, we've been, LRAAC has been participating in an in-stream flow study that's being conducted by New Hampshire DES. And when complete, the study will determine the flows in the river necessary to sustain and protect the natural and cultural resources of the river, and so that any withdrawals from the Lamprey River can be properly regulated. And I, my understanding is, at this point, that study should be completed next year. Is that right, Dick? Okay. So, our current goal is to maintain the viable quantity of water in the river during all seasons. And it should be sufficient to support aquatic wildlife and flow-dependent recreation, and, and protected resources that are identified by both the state and federal designations. So, we hope to participate in encouraging water conservation within these towns and municipalities, and minimizing new impervious surfaces, and develop a long-range municipal water plan. And at this point, we've actually been actively, within the last few months I've been there, working with both the town of Durham and UNH to create some education and outreach as far as water conservation. So, our third goal is wildlife and ecology, which happens to be my favorite, because I'm a turtle lover. And the reason why the river got designated was because it has a very high quality and diverse wildlife habitat. And so, in the years since LRAAC formed, we sponsored numerous surveys and research along the river, including amphibians and turtles, or reptiles, birds and mammals, mussels, plant communities, the floodplains, vernal pools, and several river characteristics, in all four of the towns that we work in. And the research has provided great background for our other goals, including land protection, review of proposed projects on the river, and the in-stream water flow. So, in addition to the research we've done, there's a new, actually statewide, wildlife action plan, as well as a coastal conservation plan that we're hoping to build off of for our wildlife research. And we'd like to be able to restore and protect the current ecological functionality of the river. So, one of the projects we've been involved in is a fish-water passage at the Wiswol Dam. And there are andromedous fish on the Lamprey River, and they require, as you know, here on the dam in Newmarket, there's a fish ladder, which enables them to migrate from the ocean and upstream. And right now, there isn't one of those available at Wiswol Dam. So, our goal is to be able to provide that in order to enhance fish egg-laying along the river. Our fourth goal is land protection, and this is a photograph of a meeting with the Lamprey River Advisory Committee and a landowner, on, and it's actually the Varette property, and, which consists of about 112 acres and has 2,500 feet of river frontage. And up to this point, we've had quite a bit of success with land protection projects. We've helped support 19, protecting 19 different properties totaling over 1,000 acres and over seven and a half miles on the Lamprey River. And our, the funding we get, which comes through, I guess it's federal funding, has been matched by two non-federal dollars or a cash donation.
For every dollar.
For every dollar that is spent on the federal level. And so, our, we current goals are to continue to protect significant lands along the Lamprey River and the adjacent areas, which support the ecological health of the river. And we, to do this, we need to continue to work with municipalities and landowners. We also work with local and statewide conservation organizations to encourage and increase land protection along the Lamprey River. We'll continue to aggressively pursue conservation with willing landowners. That's always the key. And at this time, we've just entered into agreements with two land protection specialists to carry out this work forward. And many of you know, probably Alan Snyder is actually one of those land protection specialists, who is now working along the Lamprey River to protect land. Our fifth goal is history and archaeology. And the, LRAAC believes that really to understand place, you need to take a look at the history. And the Lamprey River does really have a deep history related to it, including the mills down here in Newmarket. So, one of LRAAC's efforts was to create a video documentary. So one of LRAK's efforts was to create a video documentary that reveals the river's history. And it's titled "The Lamprey Through History." So our current goal is to continue research and make accessible to the public the history of the Lamprey River to encourage a deeper appreciation of the river's sense of place. And this is a painting by W.H. Tickham in 1960 of Wadley Falls. So we hope to encourage further research and documentation of the history and archaeology along the river. You can go to the next picture. Especially along Packers Falls, the old Oxway Road, and Wadley Falls. And currently, we have an ongoing project to research and provide public access at Wiswol Dam. So that's going to be incorporated into our, hopefully, a river parkway, which brings me to recreation as another goal. This is a photograph of the kiosk at the Route 87 Bridge in Epping. And probably many of you know the bridge that went in. We, LRAK helped create a parking lot with boat access. And there's, the bridge itself is also a wildlife underpass. And there's a self-guided nature trail at the bridge itself. So our goal is to improve and increase non-motorized recreational opportunities on the Lamprey River in all four towns. And many of you probably are familiar with the access that's in Newmarket, and that's the Sliding Rock Conservation and Recreation Area, which is actually at the confluence of the Lamprey and Piscassic rivers. So we're currently working on a recreational route, which would link together fishing and boat access and walking trails and points of interest along the river from Epping to Newmarket. Our seventh goal is project review and comment. And one of the things LRAK did was to participate in the construction of the Packers Falls Bridge, which, or reconstruction. Including the, that's right, including a pedestrian walkway and rebuilding the railings to provide views from the road. So the, one of the reasons why LRAK is involved within project review and comment is, one of our goals is to ensure that the suite of river protection goals are adequately addressed in any plan or project that's put forward. And to make sure that it's meeting all of the local, state, and federal laws. So we'll continue to review and comment on permits and projects which have potential to affect water quality, stream flow, and other river values. You can skip through two. There you go.
That previous one was the nature passageway at Route 87.
At Route 87, okay. So our eighth and final goal, because I know you're all getting antsy, is outreach and education. And this was a book that LRAK helped produce called "The Story of Peter Little Bear and a Lamprey River Adventure." And it's actually used by local elementary and middle schools as part of a Lamprey River curriculum, which was developed by LRAK. Our goal is to make sure we cultivate stewardship and appreciation for the river and by informing and educating the public. And one of the things that we do is, to get the word out, is to attend local fairs and events and talk to people about what we do and the importance of the Lamprey River. Yeah. So we want to build on what we've, we've produced in, you know, increasing the distribution of the history video and brochures and the book and curriculum. And we want to reach out to new peoples in new ways. And one of the ways that we did that was this year, we worked with the Lamprey River Watershed Association and conducted a river cleanup. So, and those are the eight goals. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here tonight and review the plan with you. And thank you also has to go to Dick Lord, not just because he's sitting there, but he also provided most of the photographs you see in the presentation this evening. And so I'll welcome any questions and comments. I may not be able to answer them all thoroughly this evening, but I'll be happy to bring them up at our next meeting and be able to respond to questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. If we could switch back to the regular broadcast of the show.
With her.
Thank you. At this point, we'll open up for any questions there might be. Anybody from the council have any questions for Sarah or Mr. Lord? Counselor Plasky?
I do happen to be very fortunate and live on the Lamprey River.
Oh, excellent.
I notice from time to time motorized boats leaving awake. Is there any enforcement of that? Because I was of the understanding that any motorized crafts were not supposed to leave awake.
Yeah. I don't know of the regulations on motorized vehicles. Dick, do you on the Lamprey?
Yeah.
If you could come to the microphone. We're broadcasting on Channel 13.
There's a no wake law for within 50 feet of the shore, and there are very few places on the Lamprey River that aren't within 50 feet of the shore. There was signage down at the Piscassic Boat Launch, warning people of that fact. And there had been a patrol, Will Hamill, among other people, was involved with at one point. I don't know whether that's active this year or not. Will hasn't been as active on the advisory committee in the last couple of years. And so we've kind of lost that communication link, I guess. But it's very difficult for the Department of Safety to patrol every little stream, including the Lamprey, which is not a little stream, but it's from the state's point of view, they put, you know, they have maybe 20 people and they put 19 of them on Lake Winnipesaukee, and what's left is pretty spread thin, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Can we, Al, can you look and see if a copy got delivered to the town and distribute the printed copy to the council? And it's not a follow-up with?
I don't recall coming across my desk in mail, but I'll, I'll check with Kathy.
Okay. And I think it would be good to get a copy. Some towns have actually provided written feedback, and so we're invited to do that if we'd like. And we probably would be in a better position to consider only have the paper copy. Thank you.
Thanks.
And, all right. Next, next is going backwards to travel reimbursement. And I know that there's some folks that are waiting for probably the drainage improvement discussion, as well as the Cable Committee and the bowl drainage area. So if the council's amenable, maybe we could skip to those, number six and seven?
Sure.
And if we are still up for it, we can go back. Depends on what time it is.
Time of night.
So. I think that if the council's amenable, I'd like to go to number seven first. I think it'll be a shorter discussion. I think number six might take a little bit longer. Number seven is the discussion of increasing the membership to the Cable Franchise Renewal Committee. And actually, a member of the committee is here, Bernard Gordon, and I ran into him in the hallway. So I offered him the opportunity to update us on the committee's work. So if you'd like to come up to the microphone, you may. And then we can discuss whether or not we think increasing the committee makes sense.
I'm Bernie Gordon, as Mr. Hardison said. I'm here mainly to observe, but I'll speak to it for a moment. We're a committee of five. The Diane Hardy, the town IT person, the school administrator, and I get the four and myself. I'm, I was appointed by you as the citizen-at-large representative. I suppose we're not opposed to any additional information, but I think there may be a problem in this, that we've had three meetings and we're going through a very lengthy lawyer's letter, a draft letter now, of about 50 pages, and we've done some good work on that. So if we were to add a membership to the committee, it might just be cumbersome. But at the same time, if there are people and the folks in the community who want to express any views, I would suggest that at least two of us on the committee meet with anyone who wants to speak to it. Otherwise, the only possible problem is that we may lose esteem on our schedule, because Ms. Hardy has laid out a schedule for the next almost eight months, at which point we're supposed to be able to bring forward something concrete to you guys. So that's the only thing I would say to it.
And the meetings of the committee are public meetings?
Yes, of course, absolutely. They're public meetings.
Okay. Counselor Jarvis, and then Counselor Glennon?
I'd like to suggest that we keep the membership at five, but that we encourage Mr. Alpern, who was the one that asked us to consider extending the membership, to get together and have a meeting that you so generously offered to meet with anyone that was interested, and to also remind them that the meetings are open to the public, so anybody can get the information.
Counselor Glennon?
Counselor Jarvis answered my question. I wanted to know how this came about, and it was Mr. Alpern that requested an increase. Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that either until I'm in the hallway. Any other comments or questions? Would someone like to make, I mean, does the council want to have this, does the council want to bring this back at a business meeting to increase the size, or are we just drop it as is and continue to get reports?
I think we're good.
Good?
Ken, I got a question.
Counselor Glennon, then Counselor Plasky?
Okay. If we were to agree to increase it by allowing Mr. Alpern, what harm would that do? Or can we say increase it to seven? Because it is five now, so there'd be, if there's a vote, it has to be done, it would be balanced out. But if a citizen wants to participate and be part of that committee, and I'm assuming part of that committee would mean a voting person on that committee, as opposed to someone that can be brought up to speed on what's going on and, you know, participate in the meeting. I think what Mr. Alpern is looking at is probably being a voting member of that board on any decisions that are being made.
From the answer that Mr., from the comments that Mr. Gordon made before, my sense would be that the difficulty of acquiring a new member at this point is the, is the fact that they are along the process. It's not the kind of committee, my sense would be, given that it's heavily weighted with kind of technical staff members, that is going to have a split vote. So I'm not worried about, you know, on an odd number. And it's not the kind of committee that's dealing with a political issue, it's really dealing with how to get the best contract for the town and meet our needs. So, I don't know.
When was this established?
Last year? 2007.
It just says '07. Doesn't give us a date. Current date expires on 22/08.
May 2nd.
Oh, we just did it.
Where?
We just, we just passed it last month.
So how far behind can you be in one month? How many meetings have you had?
There have been three. And two have been pretty substantive meetings. The first one was largely organizational. But the second and third meetings have been devoted to going line by line over the town attorney's draft letter to the Cable Committee. And where, what we're doing is, with Diane in particular, going, as I said, point by point and line by line to get input from anybody, including obviously Dick Halpern.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Plasky? Counselor Plasky?
I'd like to see us make exception to the rule of not voting on business matters at a workshop meeting, so that this can be decided once and for all. So that if we do decide to add a member or members, that they can be caught up to speed quicker. And if we decide not to, that the committee can continue with that work. Without the thought of, well, are they going to add more people? I think expediting it by doing it tonight would be, I would like to make that as a motion, that we expedite this and vote on it tonight.
Well, I, I would want you to have more specificity to what you're expediting, whether it's five, or seven, or 25. I'd like to remind us that we just passed this a month and a half ago, and at that time, we didn't warrant having more than five people, so.
My motion being, I would like to, I would make a motion to, that we do vote on this one way or the other. No one has made a motion as to how many, and I, I, I say that we, we vote on it tonight. That is my motion, that we do vote on it tonight.
Do you want to go to that?
Mr. Dixon, please, this, okay, so there's, the motion fails for a lack of a second. Counselor Quox?
If I could ask that gentleman, has Mr. Halpern been attending the meetings? Has he attended any of the past meetings?
No.
He hasn't.
No, not, no, he came, he showed up at one and expressed an interest, but after that, not. I think he may have had a family problem. I would say that his father had died, so.
He did, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if we don't take action tonight, it's not going to be on the agenda again. So if you want to make a motion to move it to the business meeting to act on or to not, that's fine. But someone please make a motion to get this going. Counselor Jarvis?
I'd like to make a motion that we keep the membership of the Cable Franchise Renewal Committee at five members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I start with a little discussion?
Sure. Counselor Jarvis?
I would just like to remind counselors that if, if, if we do change this, because we have someone that's interested in joining this committee, what you're planning on doing if we have somebody a week from now say they'd also like to join the committee, and then someone a week later that would like to join the committee. We did just recently do this, and it sounds like the work is being done. And it's basically one person that is requesting to be on the committee because they want to be involved. And they are welcome to go to every single meeting and have public input at those, at those meetings. So.
I'd hope we can expedite the conversation on this, because it's really, shouldn't warrant this much discussion. Counselor Quox?
I believe Mr. Halpern wanted to participate and be a member from the day one, if I'm not mistaken, so. And it was up to, the council deemed it only one citizen, so he was the fall after. But it isn't that, he's just someone who, Johnny Come Lately, who wanted to sign up. He's been extremely interested in, in doing his civic duty from day one, so I think that should be taken into consideration.
And we would also repost the position, because that would be consistent with the existing policy. So it's not like it's going to happen right away. Any other comments or discussion? The motion at this point is to keep at five members. Please call the roll.
Counselor Plasky? Aye. Counselor Quox?
Nay.
Counselor LaBranche?
Aye.
Counselor Jarvis?
Aye.
Counselor Glennon?
Nay.
Counselor Hart?
Aye. Motion carries forward to. Okay, discussion of extra-street drainage study. There is, is this the?
That's everyone, yeah.
I think the rest of the council might have gotten this. I think I might have missed it before somehow. But this is the work plan that, I don't know if you all saw this before. So the, the reason this is on the agenda tonight is that there was that presentation that Julie talked about, the discussion, and a figure of around $135,000 was thrown out by Underwood, and it's on the back page of this, for the engineering study of what they were calling the extra-street drainage basin study. And I think the council needs to discuss whether or not we think this is an idea worth pursuing, and then if so, how that might be done and the funding source for that. Anybody want to start?
I have a question.
Counselor Glennon?
My only question is, how long has Underwood Engineering been our, been doing business in town, Newmarket? Would you say fairly, Mr. Dixon, about 15 years, 20 years?
I'd say yes, maybe even longer than that.
Okay. My question is, I guess I have a hard time, and I'm not, I don't want anybody to get this wrong, I am not suggesting that we don't do the repairs in that area. Absolutely think they have to. think they have to be done. However, I got a concern of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for an engineering company that's been doing business in this town for twenty years, that they don't have at least some basic knowledge to what can be done down there without going into such a large expense of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That seems to be very, very expensive. They, I mean, if they're a new company coming into town, I probably could see spending some money, get to know the area, look at the problems and all of that. But they've been an engineer in this town for quite some time, and I just find it totally bizarre that that is such a high price. That's my opinion. I'm not suggesting what their, the scope of the work doesn't need, probably need to be done, but isn't there some of this that they already have done? I mean, they must have some knowledge of this that, and they've already done somewhere else, and not somewhere else, but done in that area. Because that's been an ongoing problem for years.
Counselor Plasky?
I agree with Counselor Glennon. We had a flood approximately fifteen, sixteen years ago, prior to the May flood, where at fifty in Exeter Street, the water was lapping at the downstairs apartment door, not as bad as the May floods. Underwood Engineering has been very active in helping our downtown redevelopment, which includes Exeter Street. And I really don't understand why the drainage issue didn't come to light, where we're studying, doing a reconstruction of that area, until we had these two floods in this May and April.
A couple things. One is, if there's any fault to lay to blame, it's, it's at the council level, but I don't think that's fair. And the reason is because the events that have occurred in ninety-six, two thousand and six, and two thousand and seven would be classified as fifty, a hundred-year floods. So they're happening more frequently. There's a lot of reasons for that. I think this study is, is trying to understand those reasons. I think the, I'm not, you know, maybe we should put it out to bid, but I don't think it's fair to say that the company that's been doing work should know the answers to these questions, because the fact that they have to talk to Army Corps, VNM Railroad, DES, and DOT, just gives you a sense of how complicated any solution, other than buying the properties, is going to be. Because you're dealing with a tidal water system, you're dealing with three different drainage areas, basins, that are in different parts of the town, and you're dealing with huge changes in impervious surface area outside of those drainage areas, as well within those, over the last twenty years, that this town council and planning board and the public have, in some ways facilitated through whatever zoning that we allowed or didn't allow. The other fact that is very, needs, that someone needs to say is that there's a brook that goes underneath Route one oh eight, that we buried a long time ago. There's a limited amount of stuff that we can do, I think, to address that. So I think we need to keep those things in light. So really, the question is, you know, at some point, maybe during the whole phase one, phase two, phase three process, the drainage should have been looked at, but it wasn't. And, and we're at this point where we're trying to figure out if we can do anything. And the first step to figure that out is whether or not we do the study. That's how I'm looking at it. I will say that I think if we're going to expend over a hundred thousand dollars, it needs to be a vote at the town meeting with an appropriation to do so. I don't think we even have the funding available from the Tiff District to do this. So, and we don't have the money in other sources. And so that's my, my request. And if we are going to do it that way, it won't get out to bid till next May or June, which would then allow us to put together a request for proposals and get more companies involved, if that's what the council wants. Counselor Quox?
Would it be fair to make the residents in that area wait that long?
Well, where's the money going to come from? I mean, this is, I, I, there's resident, or property owners right here. So I'm aware of the damage that's been, and Mike, you are a property owner, I believe, in the area. And so, but we also have to think, answer this question. There's more property owners that have been affected at Twin Rivers than in that area. So, and the solution, the solutions are going to cost many multiples of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So maybe part of the question is, is it even feasible to solve it financially for the town? Maybe we should ask that upfront. A hundred and forty thousand dollars to get answers for a million, two million dollars of expenses.
Buy the properties.
We're really going to do that? And a couple of the properties, it might make sense to buy, you know, we're moving forward on one of them. A couple others, it might make sense to try to relocate the businesses to other parts of town. But I'm not sure if we need to do a drainage study to figure that out. Because you could, you know, you could look at the property area and have discussions and say, well, if we bought this property, it could have a parking area, and it could be a downtown park. If you bought this property, you could increase the sluice way or whatever.
Exactly.
Without necessarily doing the study. I'm not saying I don't want us to try to resolve a problem. I am concerned that there's very limited solutions to that problem. And that the ones that might, you know, I've heard the idea is backflow baffles on a drainage system with a pump. That's not a small amount of money to maintain or operate, let alone install. So. Counselor Glennon?
I echo, I echo what you said. And I want, I just want to see here, how many properties would be involved? Base, let's do it this way. Take the amount of properties that would be affected in that area, look at the purchasing of those properties versus the overall cost, including the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the study, and then the actual construction and the work and the completion of the whole project, what that cost would be versus by purchasing those properties that are affected. And I bet you we'll get our answer right there.
I was trying to, I was trying to, I didn't do it. I kept asking town administrator, how many properties would be significantly impacted? I know, like John Biscuali owns a house next to Route one oh eight, Auto Body. So he doesn't really get impacted, because his house is up on a hill.
On the other side of the street.
But Auto Body, Mr. Jar, Jarros' property, the two, yours, and then the one that's for sale, and then the Palms' house, and then.
Actually, the one on the other side of my property as well.
Right, yeah. So there's probably ten, eleven properties that got, that got significant damage. I mean, we know that some of them are uninhabitable right now.
I would, I would almost suggest there would be fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one.
And?
And?
And the garage.
And the garage. So it'd be probably about six to seven properties. That's what I'm thinking of, yeah.
At best, I think. That's roughly, yeah.
Roughly right. Six to seven properties. So look at that cost, and then look at the cost of the overall project.
Counselor Jarvis?
I think it's, I think it's important for us to do this drainage study. And whether or not we do anything after this drainage study, we'll be more educated after we have the study. I think in the discussions that I've had with the property owners, the discussions with Underwood Engineers, the discussions of, that took place on the meeting, where the residents and property owners came to the meeting and threw out their ideas and their history about what has gone on at that place, that it is a drainage issue. And it's a drainage issue that's been caused by several different things, one of them being that the brook, as you mentioned, goes right underneath the road. But there are other issues. And I think it's important, from the planning perspective of this town, that we look at some of the problems that have been caused in this area, the drainage that's in this area, so that it can help us in further planning and drainage. So I fully support this work plan. I think as far as sending it out to bid, I'd be happy to do that, but I think we would find that the cost would actually be more than a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, because this cost includes the, includes the fact that Underwood Engineers already has some history, which they were, which they gave at that presentation. As far as where the money comes from, I, I'd like to see if there's a way where we could find it. I think we've found money in the past for other things, and I think I'd like to do a little homework as far as how we could come up with this money. If we can't in this budget session, then I would agree that we would put it on the warrant article for a decision of, of the people. But I would try, I would like to try to expedite this so that when they're digging up that road, and granted, some of the help is already included in the phase two project, because there will be a lot more catch basins on that road than there currently are now. But I would like to know that the work plan is in motion while they're out there digging up, so they have the idea that this is another area that we really need to be looking at while we're there.
Just regard. Okay. Counselor Quox?
Maybe the RFP, if it's put out, should have the drainage study with the homes remaining, and also with the homes removed, to see which would be the least expensive way to fix that, if we put it out to bid, or if we even have just Underwood Engineering do the work. Because they might have to change everything over. If they're calculating, it would be less expensive for them to calculate with the homes remaining there to fix the project, to fix the problem, or to fix it less expensive with the homes out of there. So you would want to weigh the cost. Can I?
Well, I think that, I think we need to recognize that on a paper, buying the properties is a solution, but in reality, for people who have lived there, it might not be, it might not be considered by them to be a solution. It might be heartbreak. So Counselor, well, Minister Dixon and Counselor Plasky?
I would suggest if you wanted to look at trying to develop a cost to purchase the properties, that we do a low-cost thing, working with our assessor to give us a ballpark figure, because that's going to depend on appraisal. So engineers' response in analyzing those properties are going to be commissioning an appraisal of the properties, and you don't want to get into that right now. So I guess I would leave the engineering, whatever engineering contract you're going to do, to the engineering and the RFP, if you're going to go that route. And then I would suggest that you perhaps maybe look at a low-budget item. We've done that in the past with working with the local property tax assessor and coming up with a ballpark of what he feels these properties would have, you know, market value for.
Counselor Plasky?
Well, a lot, a lot of the problems are not just in the Exeter Street area. The Exeter Street area is where all the water ends out. Some of the problems are the different areas that have been built up. For example, Cherry Hill Apartments, in that area, there's a lot more impervious surface up there, so a lot more water is flowing down into the Exeter Street area. And one of the things that was mentioned at the, at the meeting was the study to look at ways to not have as much water come into the Exeter Street area. And I, I am in support of doing the drainage study, and I agree with Counselor Jarvis that we can find the money for it.
Okay. Counselor Jarvis, I think you.
I'm good, thanks.
I have one. Counselor Glennon?
I wasn't in favor of this. I'm in favor of the study, but not at that cost. However, because of that cost, I would also recommend, I'm not sure which counsel said it, I think it probably was the chair, because of the cost of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I would put this to the voters. If we have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars kicking around in our budget, then I would say we have a, we got a problem. Thank you.
Counselor LaBranche?
Yeah, just a question for the chair. You can probably answer this as well as anyone. Didn't we have a possible solution for this, setting up a drainage area out back? Isn't that part of some of the homework we've done tonight, and, you know, some of the comments that Underwood came back with as far as putting some kind of a swale down there to at least alleviate some of it? Is that not part of the same thing, or?
I think, well, I think that that was, that idea has been thrown out as a possible easier solution. Jen mentioned that idea to me, the sluice way, and I, and so I think that a property that has been under discussion fits that idea.
Right.
But regardless of that idea, it's, in some ways, makes sense to acquire the property anyway. But Jen, can you, Counselor Jarvis, can you help explain the sluice way and?
Basically, how that came up is in discussions with Underwood Engineers, Counselor Glennon, the administrator, myself, Julie Glover, and the Director of Pollock Works, we were talking about what was going on down there. And without an official study of the drainage area, there were some suggestions about where the water was coming from, how it was coming in, and what were some of the things that, that we were seeing right now from that. And that was one of the suggestions of one, of maybe several, or maybe two options of alleviating some of the water in that area. So the idea was that, that, that there's certain piece of property, I think it's called a sluice way, would be made on that property, but what that would, that would help the water have a way of channeling out of Exeter Street. But then the, the topic of, where is all this water coming from that's coming into Exeter Street? And is, in, in the drainage study, how, there, there were two things we talked about, is how do we get the water out of Exeter Street fast? Three things. How do you get the water out of Exeter Street faster? How, how do you kind of store the water that's coming into Exeter Street so that it comes in slower, or doesn't come in at all? And then also, how do you keep the water, once the tide goes up, from coming back in and coming up into Exeter Street? And those were the three things that, that Underwood and those people discussed at that meeting. So Underwood suggested that we do a formal study to find out really where all this water is coming from. Really, how is it being channeled through here? And it sounded like, and correct me if I'm wrong, you were at that meeting, that these were, that it could be multiple solutions that, that solve, or maybe mitigate a little bit the drainage, probably on Exeter Street. Some of them private solutions, and some of them public solutions. And, and that, I think, is, is why we need the drainage study, to say, okay, this is what the town can do, this, this is what the property owners can do. And where, what's the big picture? Because it's not just one thing happening down there. It's, it's a multitude of things. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And if I can just go on that a little bit further. We've had two instances in, in less than twelve months where, where those properties suffered damage. And we're talking now about waiting for town meeting next May to even start this process, when we potentially have something that might take a little bit of the pressure off for small money, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, I, maybe I'm wrong, maybe this is more money than I, than I think, but I've heard some small money. And we've already talked about the potential property being available. So, you know, why, why are we abandoning that idea completely at this point, and just saying, well, we're going to wait till, or send it to the voters next May?
Well, my thoughts are to send it to the voters is because it's affecting ten properties, and we're spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That is a decision that is hard for me to justify on the face of it by itself. I know that, you know, and then there's other areas of town, like the Cedar Street area, and, and the Piscassic River Village, and many more people, many more property owners, just as devastated. And we're not talking about that, and the solution there is probably a dyke around it. But that doesn't really make any sense to anybody. So that's why I think the voters need to say whether or not they think public money should be spent this way. I, I, you know, I understand your perspective on it, too.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
But I don't think that spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars is going to give us a solution that we can implement by next May. This study is going to take at least a year, because they're going to have to do rain gauge studies and stuff like that, I would think, to figure out where the flows are coming from.
That's my point. If we, if we bring this to, to the town voters, okay, then you implement it. You're two years, if we have two more floods during that two-year period, you know, these people are going. Whereas, we've already got a possible solution that I thought we were going to go ahead with, and we're not even discussing that tonight, other than me bringing it up. And maybe I'm missing something here, I don't know.
I think the possible solution was like a napkin sketch. I mean, it wasn't, there was no formal engineering or cost analysis. So, that's my understanding of it. Minister Dixon, Counselor Glennon?
Well, first, the basic premise of, of running your town is that you have to have the appropriation. Without the appropriation, it's difficult to expend. We're not talking a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars. We're talking some pretty significant. We're not talking $1,000 or $2,000, we're talking some pretty significant money here. I, I agree with Counselor Glennon when he says if we can find $135,000 every time we drop a hat, we do have some significant budget issues, I think. The, the suggestion that was sketched out on a napkin, as Counselor Hart suggested, and is referred to by Counselor Branch, I, I think that Counselor Glennon and Counselor Jarvis can agree that's basically what it was during the brainstorming, storming session, maybe absent the napkin, but pretty much that. We, we decide that we could start to try to address it, and we can squeak by if, with the amendment that, that you did tonight on the TIF, and we can purchase that property on Prescott Street that could allow for that solution to start, start place. That's, that's a big, big part of that puzzle, if we were going to do that, and it's the most affordable time to, to acquire that property, so we should act on that. But I don't know if even the sluice way, if that's going to be 40,000, 50,000, or 100,000, okay? I have no idea at this point what the cost of the construction and reconfiguration of all that properties, all the way to where it dumps into the creek there behind the legion, what that would cost. So, you know, I, I don't know where we would find 135,000 right now. We're squeaking by, we're going to have, you're going to have to have some more authorization on the TIF district. There's money there, but it just can't be spent at a way nearly right. You've got to have an appropriation to go with it. So, right now, you're squeaking by with, got the money to buy the property. That's, I think, a good part of this puzzle. Next thing is, you're going to need some additional spending authority to, to address anything, including 135,000, I think.
Yeah, were you next?
Yeah. I just want to remind the council, when we sit here and we're looking at $135,000 and say that we should be able to find within the budget, remember also that we're going to be voting very shortly on the forensic audit, and that could cost up to 35, 40,000, estimated cost. So are we suggesting that our budget is that loose that we'll have $200,000? Again, I say, Counselors, if it is, we've got a problem with the budget.
Counselor Quox, then Counselor Jarvis?
Brian, how many other areas are these, under the work, not included? Is that all the other spots that had all the real bad damage to it?
The Piscassic River Basin Study, the Piscassic River Basin Study, I'm not sure what they mean, because the Piscassic River Basin is thousands of acres, as it goes through all the way from Epping. Beach Street, Elm Street, that would be one of the areas more, it's more Elm, Cedar down there. The Durham Side Lamprey Basin, I don't know.
If I could, Counselor-
I think they're just trying to point out the areas that they're not going to study.
And would this study help in these areas in any way, shape, or form?
I don't know. They're not, I think the Piscassic River area might actually be the area up by Falls Brook, where it intersects with the rivers, maybe what they're thinking, because we did have flooding there when the, when the, when the first storm. I think the second storm, it wasn't as bad. The first storm overflowed the road and stuff. They're not connected, because the Beach Street, Elm Street water goes, depends on where it is. The Elm Street section from the hill down goes out to the main branch of the Lamprey by the dam. The other side of the hill by my house, in the new village area, goes into the wetlands along the railroad tracks, and then out into the confluence of the Piscassic Lamprey. And actually, some of the discussion was probably that, that the area by Jay Dougal's garage, his is flooded for like a week and a half, two weeks after the May storm two years ago, and it's because of drainage, the old aerial photographs show that it was a wetland that connected all the way to the river. So there was, you know, when the road was put in and paved, and the culvert wasn't probably as big, so the water in that, what is now a prime wetland area, it doesn't drain as quickly, which in some ways probably lessened the damage at the, at the Twin Rivers area.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Jarvis, and then Counselor Plasky?
As far as thinking that there's $135,000 in the general fund, that's not what I said, this money would come out of the TIF, which is different than where the money would come for the forensic audit. And, can I finish?
Sure.
Thank you. As far as this only affecting private property, we're about to spend tax dollar money in redoing that road and the sidewalks in that area, and that also gets flooded during this time. You cannot pass through there as pedestrians, and what part of this revitalization of the downtown is making it more pedestrian-friendly. We're going to be investing a lot of money into that downtown area, in the Exeter Street area. So as, as far as it only affecting private property, I, I don't see that as the case. I'm also confused, because this council voted on including properties in that area for the, in the TIF, knowing that we're trying to do something for drainage, supporting property acquisitions and, and expending money to try to do drainage there, I'm under the understanding that I want to know what we're fixing. So I don't understand how we can go and solve a problem that we're not totally aware of what it is. So as far as putting in a sluice way, or, I mean, we're talking about acquiring properties, not knowing what the drainage problem really is down there. I'm really, I guess I'm, I'm really confused how the council's gone from, I want to find out what's going on there, I want to acquire properties, I want to include properties in the TIF, to I don't want to support a study that lets us know what's actually going on down there. So I, I'd like some more clarification. I understand the money part, and what I said was, we can find it, I said, I'd like the option to be explored, how we could afford that money out of the TIF, not out of the general fund. So I, I guess I'm really confused.
I think the only person that has expressed a lack of interest in doing this study is me. So I'm not the council. Remind, just remember that.
Really? Is that, I guess the impression that-
I don't, I think Counselor Plasky said he wants to do it, he wants to do it, Dana wants to, he just wants to put it out to vote.
Right.
That's the difference. I think the voters need to vote on it.
I do.
But I think what we can do is, and I'll let Mike, Counselor Plasky, go, is, instead of arguing back and forth about why we're doing it, or whatever, is, is for the July workshop, or it might have to be the August one, is get, can the TIF, is there enough money in the TIF to do it? And then the second question is, is this an appropriate use of the TIF fund? Which is another question. And then, and then tonight, maybe the council wants to make a decision about whether or not it needs to be prepared as an RFP, and then that can be brought forward, along with the information about the money. And then we can put it out to bid, and then we can decide, or at the same time decide if we want to put it to the voters, or if we want to use the TIF money or other sources. Those are the three questions. Because we're not going to decide if we're doing it tonight. I think the majority of folks think there's value in doing it, it's a matter of how we do it and when.
Counselor Plasky?
On the issue of the money to do it, doesn't necessarily have to come from our budget, doesn't necessarily have to come totally from the TIF fund. In case no one has noticed, Route 108 is a state road. There may be state funds available, there may be federal funds available, it's avenues that we have to explore to get this study done, so that the problem can be at least And on the issue of an RFP, I think our charter states that clearly. Yes, Underwood Engineering has 15 years of experience in this town, but we still have to put that out for request for proposal. Thank you.
Let's see, Counselor Glennon?
I'm going to probably speak here for the town administrator. I just saw your face, and I agree with him, if you're going to suggest that the state and federal funding, the monies have dried up, so that's pretty much gone right there. Number two, I want to address Counselor Jarvis's concern about, at no point did I suggest we take the monies from the general fund, and my understanding was the conversation with Mr. Dixon, as he has stated tonight, there really isn't any money in the TIF. You can't spend it until you get it, and some of that is already allocated out for other projects, so we've got to be cognizant of that fact. And the other part I stated earlier is that I am not opposed to this study. I think the study should be done, I'm not opposed to it, I just think because of the cost associated with it, and if we go out with an RFP, we're probably going to find it's going to be higher than $135,000, because Underwood Engineering has some basic information about the town, so anybody else, would probably be higher. So with that being said, I still think it should go out to the public, and let the public make that decision, because as the chairman has stated, there are other areas in town also, and correct, we are going to put a lot of money in that area. I have no doubt about that, that we're going to do that. But I, I don't see any other way around, but doing the study, but I'm not comfortable unless the voters vote on those dollars, because it is a large sum of money. Thank you.
Counselor Quox?
I agree with everybody up here, actually, but, you know, but before we expend, spend any more money down there, like Counselor Jarvis said, fixing that area with TIF money, and then it's going to flood out again, and there are, I understand, Brian, how you feel there are several other areas that need the same attention, but those other areas aren't in TIF areas. We don't have TIF money available for those areas, if I'm, if I'm correct. At least on this spot, we have TIF money that we could, could be used to start alleviating some of the residents' problems. We have to start somewhere. And, and looking at all these, I mean, we're, we're up the creek with auto paddle and a canoe. We've got to do studies for all of these places. It's going to be, it's, it's a, it's a real dilemma that we're facing, a real dilemma. But I, I think if we could possibly use TIF money, at least start someplace, and, and start there. The other places, like I said, don't have any, any funding that we could get to. Maybe put the other ones out to, to the public to vote on, but at least with this, if we could use the TIF money, I, I agree with Counselor Jarvis on that.
Minister Dixon?
Okay. The TIF, TIF funds, we've been doing some work on, and right now, you have a four and a half million dollar authorization from the voters. That's what you have for, for authorization. You're generating, and going to be generating, a lot more money than that. You are at your limits, and you're going to have to, as I told Brian, have an article this year in, in your town meeting to expand that expenditure capability. Right now, you're, you're right, right at the, you're right at the limits. Now, in reference to-
Just to clarify, I think what Minister is saying is that the projects that we have approved, the expenditures that we have done, will use the full authority of the voters. And that accounting will be provided by the Finance Director before our next meeting.
Yep.
Working on it this week.
Yep.
Because, because I knew we had lots of possible projects coming up, including this, so I asked Allen to work on that. Wasn't ready for tonight, so that's why it's not here. But the sense is that we're pretty close to that four and a half million dollar expenditure.
And I know that, Counselor Jarvis, you heard me say, look, every time something comes up, well, we can go to the TIF, you know, and, and we have gone to the TIF when appropriate, but it's, it's there now. We're right at that, we're right at that point where you need further expenditure authority. You have the revenue coming in, okay, into the TIF, but you're going to have to have, now, the expenditure authority. In reference to using the TIF to do this, I think portions of that money can come from the TIF, but a portion of that money is going to have to come from the general fund appropriation somehow, because you're going to be studying areas outside the TIF district. Okay?
Oh, yeah.
The TIF district stops at the railroad tracks, and you're looking at watershed going up into, you know, Cherry Hill, you're looking up Maple, you know, up Maple Street up that way toward the high school. So a good portion of the area that you're going to be studying is going to be outside the TIF district, so there's going to be just a proportion, you know, percentage of, of the study that can come from the TIF, okay? Because the monies has to benefit, you know, and be expended within that TIF area. Now, the actual construction certainly can be in the TIF. And I talked to Frank Underwood today, just to, because my feeling is that this project can easily break to seven-figure, seven figures, okay? And he said, well, I, I don't want to scare anyone, but he said, if I was to give a range and want to feel comfortable, he says, this project can probably very easily be, be between a million and $2 million, and that doesn't include the planning, and depending on what the solution is. So, you know, you definitely need some spending authority.
Okay, so to try to summarize this, so we can address other items on the agenda, I think we've discussed it sufficiently. Anybody else want to add anything? My sense is that we need to do the following steps, which is get a, get a clear picture of the status of any available funds from within the TIF district with, from the town administrator and the Finance Director, so we know if there's any funding available from the current appropriation levels to use for aspects of this. Does the council want to see this go out to bid and prepare an RFP?
I think we have no choice. We've made that policy.
Okay, that's fine. I would suggest that the RFP request, that the cost be broken down by area, by the three basins. That might be one way to look at it. And then we'll get that information hopefully for the July workshop, and discuss the next steps from there, which could include putting it out to bid, or deciding to put it to the voters.
Makes sense.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
Don't do motions.
Well, I mean, we can't, we can do it, but if the council's consensus is that step, we'll just make sure that, I'll make sure that it's on the agenda and stuff like that. This is a significant item, I'm not, it's not going to get blown off like some of the other items do.
Probably by the time we develop the RP, RFP and get a response, you're talking September, before you're going to have any information to work with, so, and for good guidance, so you're probably looking at the September workshop.
Well, I mean, we, I think the RFP, I was suggesting the RFP presented, so we could say, yeah, that makes sense, that's what we want to do, and then we can use the cost figure of 135, because you'd assume that their RFP would come in and that they bid around that, as the basis for trying to figure out if we have the money. I think you're right, we wouldn't get the actual proposals till September.
One, one last question.
Mr.?
I also feel we can't just say, oh, the federal funds have dried up and the state funds have dried up. If you don't try, you're not going to get it. If you do try and you don't get it, at least you tried. So I think we ought to go those avenues as well.
Okay. I'm just taking notes.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes, Counselor Jarvis? Is there a way that we can formally direct the town administrator to, as far as letting the construction, I mean, we're not going to get RFPs till September, the construction phase is going to start at the end of July, some kind of dialogue that's happening so that they're really got an eye out for what's going on in there as it refers to drainage, as it interacts with the drainage? I know we're putting in additional catch basins, but have that as one of the things, I mean, you're in there and you say, oh, look, there's a ton of water going this way, or this is happening, aware, just being aware that we're looking at the drainage in that area, so that once they're in there, we've documented what's going on, so we're not going to dig it up again to find out what's happening in there for the drainage.
I think we can address that if there's reasonable solutions that prop up as we're doing that, and we can do it within the confines of the budget, okay, of, that Julie's going to have to work with. By the way, Julie was involved in those discussions today, too, the three of us, just putting our heads together and trying to, you know, see where we are at. And so, in answer to your question, yes, but you know, there's, when we, we can't just go ahead and construct something that will start the sluice way into operation without acquiring drainage easements and all that stuff, and that's going to cost money. You know, when we start going across Vince's parking lot, we're going to have to buy drainage easement, believe me. And when we start going, you know, down across the, you know, the area into Creighton Street, there's probably going to be some, some things we'll have to do there with people.
Counselor Quox, I thought we were done, but-
Just, just quickly, hearing all this now, we had the storms last May, and then this April, and then we decided to do the Exeter Basin with the TIF money to revitalize that first, instead of the downtown area, am I correct?
Well, we, we, that was kind of decided when, when we released the contract. We decided to do the Phase 1, 2, and 3 of the downtown revitalization, as we called it, several years ago.
Right.
Okay, before the flooding. I think I'm correct on that.
Yes.
But my concern is, if we had flooding last year and this year, why are we going ahead and spending all that TIF money to fix that area when we know there's a good possibility? we could flood again and it could ruin everything?
Basically, you're not spending a lot of TIF money in that area. What you're spending down there right now is, is going to be basically TE and state aid monies and some water and sewer.
Okay.
Replacing those lines. So you're not spending-
I don't want to spend a lot of money and have it ruined and we decide to do something and, I mean, knowing ahead of time that that area was. Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Onto the next item, which, I think that we might need to table the credit, the travel policy. To the, sorry if anyone from staff was waiting that long about travel, but I think we're going to need to table that till the July business meeting, workshop.
Not the travel, but-
That workshop.
Tonight.
Okay.
So-
Okay, I didn't know who you asked of, okay, okay.
Okay, so we're on to item number nine, then. Resolution 2007-22 acceptance of, oh, this is why you're here, the $1,000 grant for the Town of Newmarket Recreation Department, Annalise. I'll just read it really quickly. Resolution relating to acceptance of a $1,000 grant for the Town of Newmarket Recreation Department, whereas the National Recreation and Park Association and the Recreational Boating and Fishing Foundation have awarded the Town of Newmarket Recreation Department a $1,000 grant, whereas there is a need to enhance and grow fishing and boating in the Town of Newmarket. Now therefore be it resolved, the Newmarket Town Council does hereby accept $1,000 from the National Recreation and Park Association and the Recreational Boating and Fishing Foundation, given at the Town Council Chambers this 20th day of June, the year of our Lord 2007. Would you mind just telling us what we're going to use this money for? Thank you.
It actually was awarded to the Club Chameleon program, and it's part of a national initiative. They chose selected communities in the country to promote fishing and boating in their communities. So the $1,000 grant will be used, we've already started at the annual fishing derby, we put together an informational booth that the kids manned, giving out cards, show, giving to the people all the spots of fishing and boating in the town. The next thing they'll do is they're actually going to be, the kids are going to be taught how to fly fish. They'll start on land, go to a stocked pond, and then take a guided trip.
Oh, wow.
And then in the fall, there'll be a mentoring day. We have 35 Club Chameleon kids being mentored by UNH athletes, and they're going to have a day out fishing. And there'll be a couple other events as well that this money will go towards.
That's great. Any questions for Annalise? Al, I think the limit is $5,000 is when we have to approve. So I appreciate that we're getting the chance to accept it, but I also am one for not having to do work we don't have to do. So-
This is just more or less meant to be a quick, make you aware.
Okay. In the future, I would suggest a department memo or something, because, just because we don't want, you know, it's not necessary for you to be here, the rule for the town is $5,000 or more.
We thought it was $1,000.
I think it's $5,000.
Yeah, just per chatter, $5,000.
Well, I appreciate you being here. I don't want you to feel like that. And you guys are doing great work with all the grant money that you have been getting over the last few years. Does someone like to make a motion to adopt this? Counsel Jarvis?
So moved.
Okay?
I'll second it.
She had her light on from like two minutes ago, so. Plasky and Jarvis, is there a, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counsel Plasky.
Aye.
Counsel Quox.
Aye.
Counsel LeBranch.
Aye.
Counsel Jarvis.
Aye.
Counsel Glennon.
Aye.
Counsel Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2007-23, a resolution relating to the Lamprey Road Drainage Improvement Project, whereas the Town of Newmarket needs to proceed with the Lamprey Road Drainage Improvement Project, whereas the Town of Newmarket would like to enter into an agreement with Underwood Engineers Incorporated to provide engineering services related to the Lamprey Road Drainage Improvement Project as detailed in their letter of October 31, 2006. Now therefore be it resolved, the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve the contract for professional services between Underwood Engineers and the Town of Newmarket at a cost not to exceed $10,500 for this purpose, given at the Town Council Chambers this 20th day of June in the year of our Lord 2007. Is there a motion regarding Resolution 2007-23?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Jarvis makes a motion. Counsel Quox seconds it. Is there discussion? Counsel Jarvis?
Weren't there some engineering services done that came up with a number of $105,000?
No, just a project review of the area and a project estimate based on, you know, general standards of construction, that's all.
So did that estimate of $105 include engineering costs, then?
No.
Okay, it was just a, all right.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Counsel Plasky.
Aye.
Counsel Quox.
Aye.
Counsel LeBranch.
Aye.
Counsel Jarvis.
Aye.
Counsel Glennon.
Aye.
Counsel Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries.
If we could just take a brief recess, and then we'll come back and do the minutes and the reports. In another business, just to note, I'm, I, I emailed, did you get the email?
Yep.
I spoke with the Town Administrator, and if you want to give out, did you bring that memo?
Which one, on the?
Recreation funding?
Yes.
I just want the council to discuss the source of funding that we spent time discussing last time on the Packers Falls project. I'm, we're going to request the council change the source of funding, and we'll discuss that, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that I'd like to, that to be discussed on the other business. So we'll take a brief recess.
Counsel Hart. I also mentioned to you today the movie that wants to be, that they want to present here at the building, and I just, just want you to hand out something. Didn't you have six?
Yep, there you go.
Al, can you let me in to get snacks?
Sure, yes. Sent it to you.
I made a motion to leave.
Yes, I do.
This one was approved at the last meeting but revised.
Okay.
How many times I pick the phone, sorry.
No, what's the one?
Hi, Brian?
I have to tape it off tomorrow.
Because you're going away.
Can't you email them? Can't you email them?
I do them at home.
You can do that from anywhere.
I'm not doing it all by making.
Oh, come on!
No, it's going to be tough, though. I've got seven kids with them at home, so it should be just like-
Oh.
Mike, Billy.
All the conditions and-
And you have to get an awful word for word on the planning board here, you're like, okay, council discussed someone's over and out about it.
Yep. They could double whammy next month because we'll be doing Planning Board on the 10th and Council on the 11th.
I was petrified because there was supposed to be the joint Planning Board and Council meeting yesterday-
Yeah.
That Rob decided not to do.
Yeah.
Like, oh, thank you. ZBA Monday, Planning Board Tuesday, Council Wednesday, Free Thursday.
What's the matter, Mike? You shaking your head at me?
Nah, not me. I wouldn't do that.
There's snack machine in here? It's not snack machine. But is there snack? No. But it's in the office. If you go and you just put some money in the thing, tell Al to let you in for. I just thought we'd be out by 10:00. I was going to go out to eat, though.
I sure hope so, but that's not going to happen.
We, do you want me to discuss the situation we talked about? Okay.
The deal is 10:30.
That'd be good. I'm not sure if that's going to happen, unless you want to skip some items.
Yes, we do.
We have to do a non-public update on personnel and-
What is this?
And on, just a real quick one on the real estate side.
Hey, Brian, we do the reports, can we just go to the council on each to ours rather than going through each one in order?
Love it, huh?
Doesn't matter. It might go quicker. In other words, if I go and do both of my reports, rather than-
Brian, should that be off?
I can't figure out how to get the thing to shut down, so I'm giving up.
How about hitting shut?
I didn't get that far. All right, so.
Not bad.
You be ready? We're ready. Okay, June 6, business meeting minutes. Is there a motion regarding those minutes? Counsel Jarvis makes a motion to second.
Second.
Counsel LeBranch, any changes? Page 3, Erica, just when I opened the floor for public comments, there were none. If you could just note that, I know it's obvious there weren't any, but it's in italics there. I have one. Counsel Glennon.
Yeah, on page 3, motion, halfway down the page, that Counselor Jarvis and Counselor Glennon worked with the Finance Director during the view of the proposal. Was that a motion, or is that just your suggestion that we work with him? You appointed us as committee, not committee, to work with him. I don't think that was a motion, was it?
I think we voted on it.
Did we vote on it? Yeah, I remember.
Okay, my mistake, then. I thought it was just you saying I'm going to appoint Counselor Glennon and Counselor Jarvis.
I think Mike might have seconded it, so therefore it became a motion.
Yeah, I guess it did.
It's like a more official.
On page 4 and 5, I don't have any changes to be made, but just a clarification. Jim Hilton stated on page 4, the wetlands permit would be needed whether the council chose to move forward with the leadic fields or not. I have since spoken to him, and that's not a fact. And he has not gotten anything from DES stating that that has to be mitigated.
We can't change the minutes to-
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify, like I said, there wasn't a change, but that was a misrepresentation.
Does that need to be changed?
No.
No.
Page 12, the top of the page, the motion to enter non-public was to discuss personnel and real estate, just to make sure that that was stated. Anything else? All right, please call the roll on the June 6 minutes as amended.
Counsel Plasky.
Aye.
Counsel Quox.
Aye.
Counsel LeBranch.
Aye.
Counsel Jarvis.
Aye.
Counsel Glennon.
Aye.
Counsel Hart.
Aye.
May 14, organizational meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes? I wasn't there, so I don't have any comments.
May 14, yes, I have one. Just a clarification, please. On page 8, where's, where I noted that the Town Administrator's search committee was seeking approval from the council to use the $1,000 previously approved by the council to conduct video conference to bring someone in, I believe that I actually did say that the total amount to bring someone in was going to be approximately $1,500, and I'd like to just make sure that's stated on there.
Okay. Remember that was a discussion that you and I had, but I wasn't there, so. Anybody else have any changes? Okay, please, please call the mo, please call the roll as amended.
Counsel Plasky.
Aye.
Counsel Quox.
Aye.
Counsel LeBranch.
Aye.
Counsel Jarvis.
Aye.
Counsel Glennon.
Aye.
Counsel Hart.
Obsean absent.
Carries.
Okay, reports. Counsel Quox, why don't you do the Heritage Committee, and there's been no budgets?
We haven't had any meetings yet. It's the last Thursday of this month.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any other ones to report on? No? Okay, Counsel Plasky.
General 13 Committee, we met. There were 11 members on the committee. We have a draft. Let's lighten them lack of the words.
Mission statement?
Mission statement, thank you, Al. Ready to be, hopefully finalized at our next meeting. We're also going to be putting resolution to the Town Council to actually formally make it a Town Board, a Town Committee. I have checked with Kathleen Murphy, and she does not have a problem with that. That's about it, as far as the school board goes. Due to a death in the family, I was not able to attend that meeting.
Counsel Wolfenhamwell is excused. Did he get the minutes of the Highway Public Safety Committee meeting? And Counsel LeBranch is a member of that as well? No?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, so we'll let you update that when it gets to your turn. Counsel Jarvis?
The downtown TIF, we met last week, and it was basically just an organizational meeting. Phil LaPage was nominated for Chair, and also Jerry Landry as Vice Chair, which is what was last year. And we basically just went over some of the discussions about the rules and procedures for conducting a meeting, and that was about it.
And you're on the budget and CIP, or CIP, so nothing to report there.
I don't have anything else.
Fire Department Study Committee, who is interested in being on that? Counselor Jerry Hamel was on it in the past, so we need to have a replacement. The committee has not met since they presented to us in March. So if anyone's interested, let me know, and I'll, I know that Mark Bradford contacted me to find out who was going to be the, if there was an update that he didn't know of, and who was going to be the council representative. Anyone interested? You can volunteer now, or you can call me, or you can be surprised.
I was going to say, or be appointed.
Okay, Mike, Highway Public Safety?
Okay, that meeting was on June 12, and there was actually a culvert problem on New Road that's being addressed. They're going to be digging it up and just checking things out and try to get some drainage taken care of. There's an extreme amount of water on one side of the road, and it doesn't seem to be going where it's supposed to. They also briefly spoke about the Route 108 signal down in Jerry Ave, trying to get a little more enforcement on that, people that are not obeying the stop. That was basically it for the Highway Public Safety. As far as the Planning Board is concerned, I'll do my notes. Actually, Dan Vincent was at our last meeting. He brought to our attention three businesses that were in violation of some of their conditions of approvals, and showed us pictures, let us know what was going on. And basically, the next steps are, they're going to receive a notice of violation, and this RSA and everything. He spoke to the tenants, he's done that, so that part's done. If they're still in violation, then they're going to have to return to the Planning Board. So that's the process that he's on. There's also one organization, Salon Realty, which bought the old Ernie's Construction up on Watley Falls, gravel pit. He's attempting to put a storage trailer business out there. We did a site walk with him last evening. He explained what his plans are, and we'll be discussing that further as far as approvals, but no onsite storage of any, these are all empty containers, so it's not any, any problems with the wellhead or anything like that. But it was an interesting walk of the property. And that's basically it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you know, was a date decided on for the joint Town Council Planning Board meeting last night?
No, that has been basically put on hold, to my knowledge, per the Vice, per the Chair of the Planning Board, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Yep.
I thought it was shut down.
Oh, there's concerns about, we just need to be careful that the Planning Board doesn't put itself in the position of not being able to discuss a particular proposal that might come forward, so the council can have all the discussion it wants.
Okay.
If it can be related to the planning board, so we just need to find a time to do that. The NCDC will be meeting in a matter of weeks, two weeks, and they have received two proposals for the mill redevelopment. And those proposals have been reviewed by the subcommittee, and then there were interviews conducted with each of the proposals developers. And so then the NCDC will be further evaluating the proposals and discuss them at the next meeting. Yes?
Are these proposals received favorable versus the others, or... Do they look better promising as to where they went?
Well, they all meet the proposal's intent, it's just a matter of degree. And so that's what the committee is doing, is trying to understand them better and see what areas there might be for change. Counselor Glennon, oh, town administrator search, I'll do that at the end. Go ahead.
I had a question. With the RP's, has anyone gotten back in touch with Smunny Nose at all to see if they're still interested? I know there was something in the paper yesterday or something.
Yeah, well, Smunny Nose is going for Kittery now, is what I read in the paper. No. Well, that's not, there's not been any recent contact, but Arlen Chaffey has had kind of perpetual contact.
Because I called several people last time and hoping to get, you know...
Yeah, I think...
Do you think if the town was a little more enthusiastic in talking to him, he might reconsider, we can get him back to the drawing board?
I'm not gonna say no, ever. I just, I don't think it was the town that was an issue. It was really just a difficult fit for the site, and now the timeframe he's on, he seems like he wants to be building like tomorrow. And the proposals we've gotten from these developers is they're not, they're gonna have a year and a half of planning board approvals, and they're not gonna be doing construction in those sites till 2009, 2010.
Whatever site he picks in Kittery or Portsmouth, whatever, he's gonna have to go through the same procedure.
Right, but if it's a new site, he can build whatever he wants, it's a lot faster and simpler. So I know Arlen has had, as a, his, Arlen works in Portsmouth and has occasion to run into him or see him, that there's been contact made, and so I wouldn't say it's closed, but I would say that, you know, he's pursuing other opportunities.
I just hope that we would enthusiastically approach him. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Glennon, Riverwalk?
Okay, as Julie Glover has already alluded to some of these, let's see. At some point, we'll be bringing to the council an idea, and I think we've talked about it in the past, to bring the main street to the Riverwalk area from the beginning of Water Street down to the bulk ramp. We're looking at some ideas in that area, and according to Russell Serviti, some of that work has already been done by Charles, is it Charles Hoyt?
Charlie Hoyt.
Charlie Hoyt. He's done that, he was contacted this week by Diane Hardy, and he doesn't have the drawings anymore somewhere. They're in the town hall somewhere, and Diane's gonna look at that, so that's moving forward. We'll be bringing some ideas to the council on how, what we might think it will cost to get a drawing done, okay? The other thing is, we're looking at a name for Phase Two. I'm getting a little tired of calling it Phase Two Park, as opposed to, we already have a name for Chandler Park. Some of the ideas that were tossed around was, because the Joyce's Kitchen used to be a blacksmith, there's some talk about Blacksmith Park, and Russell Serviti has made a suggestion, I'm not sure if he's willing to make the offer of doing it financially, but having something in the area with the flower beds, or what's that thing called? Something like that with a plaque depicting it, and so on and so forth. So we're moving forward with that. We're also moving forward with the area where the flower beds are. We still have a number of people coming out of, not just Joyce's Kitchen, but in that area, walking across the flower beds, trampling the flower beds. Russell Serviti also agrees that that's a problem, so Mike Provo and myself are looking at AAA fencing to put a very low-grade fence there that matches the same black Roth iron fence that's along the seawall, but a lower scale of that, and trying to prevent people from going in there. Let's see. As Judy stated today, I did contact her, the trash barrels, benches, all that's being ordered today. There are also, Diane Hardy is gonna look into, there's a drainage issue, storm drain water coming from the parking lot, from the upper parking garage area, and coming down. And there's an area where there's a, or wheelchair ramp to come up on the sidewalk of the Riverwalk itself, and it's eroding in there. So Rick and Julie Glover are gonna be looking at how we can solve that problem in that area, along with Diane Hardy. So that's being worked on. And I think that is, oh, they've also did election of officers, and by unanimous vote, I guess, I guess we could say. I was elected chair again. And that's it?
Good question.
Counselor Plasky?
The problem of people walking through the garden, I've been down to Joyce's Kitchen in the mornings, and I've noticed people doing that, and I've said, you know, please don't walk through the gardens. If there were some sort of path, even if it was flagstone stepping, stepping stones through the center of that garden, people would use those to get, because they, they come out of Joyce's, they don't wanna go to the ends of that garden to get into it. So they're walking across flower beds. But if you put a small pathway in there, it might resolve the whole problem.
Good suggestion, but there's more than one spot that they're walking, it's multiple spots, and that's why we have to fill it in with more plants, and we're suggesting offense.
If you do a center walk, though, that might drag, that might direct them to that center walkway.
Good suggestion.
Can I make one quick statement, Frank?
Sure.
Talking about the Riverwalk and Sabaji in Joyce's Kitchen, I just want to publicly state that I had nothing to do with the placements of those barrels with the operating around Joyce's Kitchen, as has been stated by certain people. I just wanna make that perfectly clear. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not sure what that's about, but it's okay. The next item is town administrator search committee, and the council has conducted interviews, and tonight we're announcing, and I'm glad the media's still here, so it can get out, that we are gonna be conducting a public meet and greet session on Tuesday, June twenty-sixth. It'll be at the New Market Elementary School, from seven PM to nine PM for the two finalists. And those are Edward Winowski of Brentwood and Barry Brenner of Northborough, Massachusetts. Here's a press release that you all can take, that gives some more details on that. The council conducted the interviews of the finalists, and decided that we wanted to offer the opportunity for the public to meet the two candidates and get to know them a little bit. This, the meet and greet sessions will be an informal opportunity for the public to talk to them one-on-one, ask questions, learn more about them, hear what they think. It's not gonna be like a political speech with, you know, questions and answers and a debate. They'll be in separate sides of the cafeteria. It'll be informal, drinks, you know, refreshments and snacks. And during the day, the town council will be hosting them for some tours of town facilities and meetings with the staff and department heads. And then the council will be meeting later that week or in July to make a final decision. The public will also be afforded the opportunity to fill out some kind of, not surveys, but a comment sheet to provide any feedback they might want to on the candidates once they've had the chance to meet them. So we hope that anybody out there listening can tell their friends, and if you're interested in meeting the finalists, to come on Tuesday, June twenty-sixth, seven to nine PM at the New Market Elementary School cafeteria. And that will be, I'm sure, posted on the website and our Channel thirteen, as well as in the papers, I'm sure, as soon as they can.
In the marquee.
And, yeah, it'll be on the marquee as well. So, that's good, we're making progress. And I wanna thank the council members who were able to help coordinate some of that. And again, thank the town administrator search committee, Arlen Chaffey, Al Zink, Lorraine Caprioli, Chief Seer, Sergeant Budette, Michael LaBranch and myself, as well as Todd Selig from the Town of Durham, who provided, as an advisor to the process, was invaluable. And also to do set survey for allowing us to use our facility for some of the meetings, so we could be a little bit more confidential in the one-on-one interviews. That's the update on that. Okay. So, old business, other business, authorization for the town administrator to sign the police department union contract. In discussions with the town administrator, he asked, "Do I have authority to sign this?" And I said, "Well, the voters passed it, and we did, but let's just make sure you do, so there's no question." So if we just have a motion to authorize Al to sign that contract, some will, and he's gonna be done by the end of the, today, so... Is there any questions? Please call the roll.
Counselor Plasky?
Aye.
Counselor Quox?
Aye.
Counselor LaBranch?
Aye.
Counselor Jarvis?
Aye.
Counselor Glennon?
Aye.
Counselor Hart?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I'd like to request is this memo that Al gave out tonight, and I, you know, I'm at fault for asking to do this, and that's why you got it today. But basically, in discussions with Al over last week, he made it known to me that, that after he met with Jim and went through the finances for the project to date, that there actually has not been an over expenditure to the degree that we thought. That it's only $710 has been spent beyond what was previously budgeted, so you can see the breakout of that in the memo. And secondly, he had discussions with Mr. Prescott, who's here, and Al is of the very strong opinion that we should reconsider, and he's asking us to do so, and I now agree with him, that the source of funding for this project come from the Recreation Department Fund, given that the majority of the work is being for that project. And that if we come to the situation where we decide not to do the project, and then DES tells us we have to do some restoration work for the other impacts that the field would address anyway, but we're not doing the field. So if that circumstances come up, we can decide to spend the money from the right source at that point. So there's kind of, there's three things here. One's an update to say we haven't overspent as much money as we previously thought, and this is an accurate accounting of the situation right now, so that's good news. The second thing is to ask the council to reconsider the source of money. I was on the prevailing side, so if necessary, I'll make the motion. And then the third thing is that you can see here that if we wanna have all the information possible in July or August, hopefully July, but it might be August, that if we authorize some additional expenditures that would still put us underneath the cap that we previously set of $5,400, we would be able to have cost estimates, the permits in place, and bid documents at our meeting, which would then allow us to make a decision as to whether or not we think this is something we wanna do. So the second part of the request tonight is to consider whether or not we want to authorize those expenditures, or maybe just the cost estimate one, so we can have a cost estimate for what the project is expected to come in when it goes out to bid. Did you wanna add anything, Al?
Yes, if I could, I think in order to get the cost estimate, you're gonna have to have the 310, the 1100, and the 500 from Mark West. Okay? And I apologize for the format here, but Kathy was really busy today, and this was done at the last end, and I didn't even have a chance to approve it, and she signed for me. But I hope it's clear that...
That's okay.
Within existence of...
I understand that you're doing it at late request for me.
Okay.
Counselor Quox?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract over expenditure for $710.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Are you gonna identify the source of money?
To come from the Rep. Department Fund.
Okay, so, alright.
From the reserve.
From the reserve.
Okay, just, so it's...
So that's addressing one of the things I've brought up. It's not, it's the capital improvement, Capital Reserve Fund.
Could I make a suggestion? It would probably streamline your decision-making process tonight if you would just simply vote to approve the ordinance, what was it, a resolution to 20718, in the amount of 5410, to come from the Capital Reserve.
The Recreation.
The Recreation Capital Reserve, which would reverse the vote that you took last time, taking it out of the water fund.
Well, we don't wanna, I don't wanna amend my vote, my motion for the full amount of 5410.
Okay.
All I wanna pay is 710.
So let's just go with, let's just make the decisions as they come. So the motion has been to authorize the expenditure of the $710 to come from the Recreation Fund.
For MJS, I believe it was.
Is there any other comments on that? Alright, please call the roll.
Counselor Plasky?
Aye.
Counselor Quox?
Aye.
Counselor LaBranch?
Aye.
Counselor Jarvis?
Aye.
Counselor Glennon?
Aye.
Counselor Hart?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the second request that I would make is that we authorize the expenditure of up to, I'm only gonna say $3,000, which would be 4,460 less $1,800, plus a little bit of fudge factor, to do the, finish the survey work, engineering, environmental, and then to get cost estimates, but not to do the bid documents, so that we can have a cost estimate for consideration when we make a decision on moving forward or not. That's my request. So if two people think that's a good idea, I'd ask you to make that as a motion.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Basically, if you look on the second page, what I was requesting is that we have, we given Al authorization to do everything on that second page but the bid documents, and to spend no more than $3,000 to do it.
What happened to your email that said $750, we're gonna...
$710 is what Roseanne just did.
Yeah, but here...
Oh, yeah.
We'd like permission to expend $750.
If we did $750, I had emailed Counselor Glennon saying, outlining this general situation and saying, if we spend $750, we can get a cost estimate. Al is saying tonight, and I didn't discuss that with him when I sent it to him, is if, the cost estimate would be, that would be better prepared if we had the additional work from the consultants that they're gonna need to best evaluate the construction. And so that's what the DUCET is to produce the final plan, and MJS do some of the final engineering, and Mark West. So the reason I'm suggesting is that it puts us within the amount of money we authorized last time, and gets us more information, so we can make a better decision.
Put you less, really.
We're still spending less than what we had, thought we had. So Counselor LaBranch made that motion formal, and then Counselor Jarvis seconded it. Is there any further, oh, yeah, Counselor Quox?
Did we get a legal opinion yet regarding the notations on the plats and so forth?
Well, the discussions that I had with Al and FX Bruton, our town attorney, was that if the council wants to move forward, they're gonna have to go to the planning board and ask the planning board to remove the note that says this is for conservation purposes.
But the planning board doesn't have to do that, do they?
They don't have to, but I've spoken with the chair of the planning board at the time, and his recollection was consistent with what I understood, which was that it was, understood that it was for town purposes. At the time, we were talking about a water treatment plant going there.
Yeah, and a storage tank.
And stuff like that, so...
Because I thought we were gonna discuss this and further before we expended any more money at the next, at July 11th meeting, because there's a lot of discrepancies and a lot of questions as to whether this is even a viable project down there. We've gone from three fields to just two-thirds of one field, so...
Roseanne, Counselor Quox, you said that before, and you're making it sound like that's a new thing. The entire council is aware of that, and that, and you're against the project, and I understand that, that's fine. But you previously asked for to know how much money it's gonna cost. I can't answer that question unless we do this stuff. That's why I'm requesting that we do it tonight. But if the council wants to say, "We're not doing this project, there's four votes against it," let's just do it tonight, because I don't wanna spin my wheels anymore. Alright, if four people don't think this is a good idea, and they don't care how much it costs, little or too much, vote against it, and we'll be done. There's a lot of staff time and energy being spent on trying to make this move forward. And if the council doesn't wanna do it, let's move on and spend energy on other areas. So maybe this motion will be a test of that. I don't know. Or maybe folks want more information, like how much it might cost to do this. Okay, it's getting late, I'm getting wound up.
Could we give a quick reread of the motion?
Okay, so the motion, if I'm, would you, how about one of you? Okay, the motion is to authorize the expenditure of up to $3,000 to have DUCET, MJS, Mark West prepare the final information necessary to get a cost estimate for construction of the fields. Is that accurate?
Very accurate.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Plasky?
Nay.
Counselor Quox?
Nay.
Counselor LaBranch?
Aye.
Counselor Jarvis?
Aye.
Counselor Glennon?
Nay.
Counselor Hart?
Aye, so it fails three to three. Okay, Counselor Jarvis?
I'd like to make a motion that the town council reconsider their vote on Resolution 2007-18, so that five, so that $5,410 come from the Packer Falls Complex Capital Reserve. Actually, I don't think I can make that, because I was the one that...
Yeah, we basically did... Yeah, we basically did that when Roseanne made her motion.
She only made the motion for 710, she was specifically saying she only wanted $710.
That's because that's the only amount we over expended. All the other money, we had the authority to spend.
Right, but you should rescind the vote, at least.
Oh.
You know, we got an authorization to expend.
Okay.
Technically.
So, what is it?
We're not voting, but you should rescind.
Their motion, then, is to rescind Resolution 2007-18.
But I, I don't think I can make that because I was the one.
Right, you have to be on the prevailing side, which would be me.
Which would be.
Everybody except for you and Mike LaBranch, I believe. Right?
Do you want it to come from water?
No.
I think I'm the only one that voted against it.
Well, no, I, at the last meeting, yes, I did go in favor of the water.
Oh, okay. There's two people against it.
Didn't the motion that Roseanne made, the seconded with $710, didn't that?
No, because there's.
No, we want to nullify this.
So, can someone just make a motion to rescind Resolution 2007-18, someone who voted for it last time?
Second.
Okay, so you voted against it, and you voted against, that's right.
I, I'm confused, I thought.
The only people that voted against it were Wilfred and I, so somebody other than me needs to make a motion to rescind.
That's right, because you want to.
Resolution 2007-18, rescind your decision to have all the money come from the water department.
Well, essentially, right now, we're rescinding the whole thing.
Right. So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Government at 10:30. Okay, Counselor Quox makes the motion, Counselor Plasky seconds it. This is to rescind Resolution 2007-18. Is there any discussion?
Over there.
Mr. Dixon.
I just would like to, I'm sure the council's all aware of this and thought of it, but there has been a lot of money spent on this project. There has been a lot of energy, and you're at the final end. And if you negate it, I think it's a waste of money. It has been a waste of money. If you carry it to the end and you make the vote, it's still going to be a waste of money, but at least you'll have all the information, and it's too bad, and there's been a lot of time, and there has been money. And there is a $100,000 grant that goes with this project that's not going to be there. So, I think you should weigh that in your decision.
And I think we have, sure.
Counselor Branch.
I'm sorry, I'm generally not fried at this time, but can you explain to me what this vote will actually mean?
This vote will say that we're no longer authorizing the expenditure of $5,410 from the water fund to do the work that we thought hadn't been paid for.
So, so we're basically not allowing any further money to be spent?
From the water fund. And then, the motion that Roseanne first made says, the money that was over expended can come from the water fund, and that was $710.
But we don't get the rest of the work done?
On the rec fund.
The project officially stops.
We don't get the, right.
We don't get to do any more work because the motion that you and Jen made failed.
Basically, the last meeting, we did a resolution to take the money from the water fund, we're pulling that back, and I was saying, taking it from the rec.
So, when DES comes knocking at our door saying, "We have to fix this six or eight months from now," we start from scratch.
We, we have a discussion and find the money from other sources, since it wouldn't be recreation if we don't do the fields. I think they're separate.
They're separate.
Because even if we did the $3,000 that I requested, it's not necessarily that we're going to do any site work, which is what's going to address DES concerns, that we haven't formally got notified, but we highly are suspecting will be coming if we don't do the other, the recreation project.
But we can continue with this phase, and if we so choose, further down the road, to not continue with the project, we can do that also, correct?
Yes.
But we can get the legwork done and save the town $10,000, $15,000 in a year from now?
I don't.
I wouldn't consider it that way.
I don't know if it'd be that much, but if you spend that extra money, you will have to permit, so if you are, you do receive the order, you can do, you'll do the work without spending any more money for permitting process, which will save you probably the $2,000 or $3,000 you're talking about expending. I don't know about the $10,000, but it certainly will, because if you get the order, if you don't do the project, the project dies tonight.
It's not going to, it wouldn't die tonight because.
It wouldn't?
No, because there's a seventh counselor not here. We can read it, you can discuss it again with the seventh counselor being present.
Okay, then.
We're just, all that happened tonight is that we decided, we're still going to get the wetlands permit, you had the money to do that work. We just don't know how much money the project's going to cost.
No, we don't have quite enough money yet to get to the final portion. This will get, this, this was listed down here.
This isn't in relation to the.
All right. Hold on a second. Mr. Dixon, right now, we better have enough money to do the permit work, because that's what the whole discussion was at the last meeting.
Well.
Am I correct that that resolution was to pay for the work that had been done?
Mm-hmm.
We have authorized $19,000 expenditures, we've only overspent by $710, and that included $3,500 for the costs associated with the permit, and then the site-specific permit work, which hasn't been done yet.
Well, the site-specific permit was done. See, there's the $1,000, that was done. See, I listed as unpaid, the $3,510 and the site-specific $1,000. So, that's $4,510. You know.
So, Al, what are the number, I know we haven't made any motions, what are the numbers in the back actually going to buy?
They're going to get us to the point where you.
No, no, what are they going to buy? What's the, what's the.
They're going to get us, they're going to get us to the full permit, the full permit to do the, to do the work. We got the site-specific permit, but that's separate. Now.
Okay, I think that's enough. Counselor Jarvis.
I just, I was wondering if we could table a lot of this discussion about what we're going to do next, since that motion didn't pass, and that we focus on the motion that's on the table, which is rescinding the decision to take the money out of the water department.
That's fine.
Local, I would say.
I think there is a lot of confusion about what actually is going to get done with the money we've spent, or that we just authorized to be spent.
Well, we didn't authorize any additional money tonight to be spent, right?
No, but we authorized where the money was going to come from for work that had been done to date. So, I still don't know what exactly we have done today to what we're paying for. But that's okay. The motion on the floor is to rescind, so let's vote on it. Is there any discussion on that motion? You're right to redirect it, so. Please call the roll on the motion to rescind 2007-18.
Counselor Plasky.
Aye.
Counselor Quox.
Aye.
Counselor Branch.
Aye.
Counselor Jarvis.
Aye.
Counselor Glennon.
Aye.
Counselor Hart.
Aye. Okay, we're not going to do the non-public minutes, but we do need to go into non-public session. If there's any other old business or other business, I would request that we not do it.
I have to have you do this, Brian.
This is not.
It has to do with the last vote. This project will effectively die because there won't be enough time.
I think that the three folks that voted against it are fully aware of that.
Okay, so then, all I'm saying is, if you don't, I could go through a step of getting an extension on this process from DES so that that doesn't die, and if you want to reconsider it, you know, but we can get a maximum of 120-day extension, so you can further consider.